Good morning, I'm Danielle McCray. Good morning, I'm Danielle McCray. I am the chairperson of this committee, which is the Budget Appropriation Committee, as well as the councilwoman for the 2nd District. In attendance, we have committee members, Paris Gray Councilman, Paris Gray, excuse me, from the 8th District. We also have other councilmembers, which would be Councilwoman Odette Ramos, representing the 14th District, and also Councilwoman Felicia Porter, representing the 10th District. Thank you. And also in attendance, we have several representatives from the mayor's office and the city council president's office, as well as our committee staff person, Marguerite Karen. We are going to be hearing three bills, excuse me, we're going to be hearing one bill. First at this time, it's going to be Legislative Oversight, LO 25-0001, Quarterly Budget Briefings. That's going to include briefings from BBMR, the Department of Planning, Capitol Budget, and Baltimore City Public Schools. We are going to start with our quarterly budget briefings, and we will be hearing a brief PowerPoint from our finance department at this time. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, members of the committee. My name is Laura Larson, I'm the city's budget director. I am here today to walk through our third quarter projections for the current fiscal year, fiscal '25. So, third quarter will reflect all of the revenue and expenditure up through March 31st. So, based off of our overall outlook for the city's general fund, we are essentially very consistent with what we were projecting at the second quarter. However, within that $8.2 million projected deficit for the city's general fund, when we look at third quarter compared to second quarter, our revenue outlook has improved by about $14.5 million, but our expenditure deficit has also grown by about $14.4 million, meaning that we haven't gained ground on our projected deficit. On the revenue side, we're seeing improvements around personal property taxes, transfer and recordation taxes, and highway user revenue. And on the expenditure side, we're seeing increased expenditures in our police and fire departments, along with the final cost from winter storm response that was all incurred during the third quarter. If we look at these variances overall for the general fund, our revenue is about 1.5% variance compared to the adopted budget, and our expenditures are about 1.8% over. So, let's talk first about what's happening with general fund revenue. As I mentioned, revenues are up by about $14.5 million compared to our second quarter projection. What that means is we're projecting a $37.1 million revenue surplus. What we're seeing is that the growth is coming particularly around our personal property taxes, as we have seen the increase in assessments based off of certifications filed by businesses. Our highway user revenue is more optimistic than what we had had at the second quarter, based off of additional disbursements that we've received from the state. And then we have a handful of other miscellaneous adjustments that are breaking our way, from things from tipping fee revenue to energy taxes, as well as the cost of tax credits coming in slightly under what was budgeted. In terms of revenue streams where we've downgraded our outlook, the biggest impact is regarding the city's income tax. And the overall projection for income tax revenue is down by $4.5 million compared to our second quarter projection, and that is driven by the updated outlook that is coming from the state, especially as we look towards the impacts of higher unemployment, lower filings statewide. This slide just shows you what those surpluses and deficits look like based off of the various categories of revenue. And this slide shows you what the, just the local tax share of the general fund revenue looks like. Again, this is where we have a surplus of about $33.5 million. This slide just shows us a little bit, again, in terms of magnitude of the major variations. So, I'll talk about each of these in a little more detail as we go. So, let's start with the projected surpluses. So, first up is income tax. So, I mentioned that our projection is down by $4.5 million compared to the second quarter. However, we're still projecting a surplus here. So, the overall surplus is projected to be $15.1 million. When we look at income tax projections, we take into account the growth assessments that we receive from the state of Maryland. So, in our initial budget assumption for fiscal '25, the state said you should project 4.6% growth in your income tax receipts for fiscal '25. Then, in December of 2024, they said you should improve your outlook and assume a 6% growth for the rest of fiscal '25, and that's what led us to our second quarter projection of about a $19 million surplus. But now, they have come back in March, and they said, actually, you should decrease your growth assumption to 4.9%, and that's why we're back in this $15 million projected surplus. It's important to note that there are a number of other factors, non-employment-based filings that can impact our income tax revenue. One of those is fiduciary returns. So, that's income taxes that people are paying on non-employment-based income. So, like, let's say you have perhaps like a trust fund that you're drawing income from and paying taxes. One of the things that we're monitoring really closely is that the income tax receipts from those filings is down by 48% or $6.6 million year-over-year. We don't have a great answer for why that dropped off so dramatically and so quickly, and so that's something we're digging into more with our state partners to understand if that was a one-time thing, or if that's a new trend we need to count on. One of the things that's helping us out here is our state allocation. So, what happens is, the state collects local income taxes, and then the dollars get allocated out to the local jurisdictions based off of their share of the tax base. And so, when the state updated that portion of the formula, the city's share actually went up a little bit. So, we went from receiving 5.6% of the statewide collections to receiving 5.612. So, it's a small increase, but that's also helping in terms of some of the growth that we're seeing here. One of the things that I do just want to note is that when it comes to income tax, all of the state's final reconciliations happen in the fourth quarter, and actually, the final reconciliations happen in the first quarter of the next year, but they get accrued back to the final year. And that's when they do their big reconciliations. And so, we may see some additional adjustments here, but we don't have great visibility into those reconciliations, and we've seen them be swinging in our favor in a significant way. We've also seen them go the other direction, too. And so, this is just one that we're closely monitoring as we go into the process of closing out fiscal '25. Next up is transfer and recordation taxes. So, we're projecting a $9.7 million surplus here, and that's $4.5 million higher than the second quarter. What we're seeing is that transactions that are subject to the transfer tax are up by about 5%, but those that are subject to the recordation tax are down by about 4%. But, within those trends, what we're seeing sort of overall within this revenue stream is that the value of the transaction is higher, and that's based off the fact that our residential properties are selling for a higher value. And that higher value is what is contributing to the increased revenue. So, if we look at the average sale price of a home for the first three quarters of fiscal '24, that was at about $251,000. And if we look at that same period for fiscal '25, it's up to about $260,000. So, that's good news in terms of the fact that our residential properties in particular continue to hold their value. So, even though there's fewer transactions, they are higher-value transactions. Next up is property taxes. So, this is our largest revenue source, and we're projecting a $5.1 million surplus. And that is up by $5.3 million compared to the second quarter, noting that we were projecting a small deficit at the second quarter. The big change here is coming from the personal property tax component of this category. So, just a reminder, our property tax revenue includes real property and then the personal property taxes that are paid largely by businesses. The real property tax portion, which is the largest share of the $1.1 billion, is very consistent and easy to project because it's based off that assessment data that we receive during the planning process. And so, when we look at our real property tax projections, they're in line with the second quarter. We're seeing a collection rate consistent with prior years at about 97.5%, and we're seeing essentially consistent appeal rates compared to prior years. What is different is that on the personal property tax side, we're seeing surpluses both from public utilities, as well as business and corporate personal taxes. What happens here is that these entities file their certifications, and then their tax certifications, and then their assessments get updated based off of that. And that can happen throughout the fiscal year. And what we're seeing is that for these particular components, the assessments were up year-over-year based off of the most recent certifications. Next up is a broader category called charges for current services. This revenue stream is projected to generate a $4.5 million surplus. That's up by $4.8 million compared to the second quarter. This is driven by a number of components. One of them is the overhead rate that's paid by our water and wastewater utilities. The overhead rate is calculated based off of their expenditures, and so, based off of the higher expenditure level, we're projecting increased revenue for fiscal '25. We're also seeing that our tipping fee revenue is up by about $2 million, and that's driven by an overall increase in tonnage that's coming to the landfill. So, that's both from large haulers, as well as increased ash that Bresco is dropping at the landfill. And then, the other component of this is related to the semi-annual tax payments. So, those are up to $631.7 million compared to $611 million in fiscal '24. And then, finally, tax credits. So, the overall cost of our tax credit program is projected to be about $3.8 million lower than budget. This is coming particularly from a couple of our credits where there's lower utilization than what we had assumed in the budget. So, one example would be our CHAP tax credit. We're seeing fewer applications for CHAP tax credits, and so that's resulting in a lower cost of the program. On the flip side, we, within this projection, the cost of the Brownfield Tax Credit Program is higher than what we had projected in the budget, and that is driven by a handful of projects that were not online at the time that we developed our budget projections last year. So, now, let's switch gears and talk deficits. First up would be parking-related revenue. So, we are projecting a $3.6 million deficit in terms of parking-related revenue, and that is down by about $800,000 compared to what we were projecting at the second quarter. What we're seeing is that our overall ticketing trends have continued to improve. That was something we saw really improve in coming into the first of the year, but that the overall number of citations are still down by about 2% when we look at the full fiscal year. The other thing that is happening here is that we had assumed additional revenue from piloting license plate reader technology as part of our enforcement efforts around the residential parking program, and that pilot has taken longer to get up and off the ground, and so, we are not realizing the revenue that we had projected for that pilot, just based off of delays of getting that project going. Next up is traffic camera violations. So, we're projecting about a $4.4 million deficit for this year. That's up by about $1.2 million compared to what we were seeing at the second quarter. And the big thing here is delays in terms of new cameras that were scheduled to come online in fiscal '25. And next up is investment earnings. This is projected to have about a $7.2 million deficit. That's up by about $800,000. There are two factors impacting our investment earnings. One is our cash on hand, so our cash on hand is down compared to what we've seen in prior years. And the other portion of this is related to the interest rate. So, we had assumed that we'd be getting about a 4.4% return on our short-term investments. We're actually getting about 3.8%. So, now, let's talk about what we're seeing on the expenditure side of the House. So, as I mentioned, our expenditure deficit has grown compared to the second quarter. This is largely coming from winter storm response costs. So, we spent almost $16 million on snow and ice removal during the winter months. The other thing that we have fully picked up in the third quarter was the cost of the contract with the FOP within police. Their contract went into place on January 1st, and the total cost of that contract exceeded what we had assumed in the budget. In terms of good news, we do have improved outlooks in the city's IT department, homeless services, and Wreckin' Parks. That is driven by agencies reviewing expenditures and charging items to the appropriate place, but also cost control efforts to slow spending to ensure that they're staying within the budgeted amount. So, what I want to do is I want to take a minute and put some of these data points in the context of what we've seen compared to prior years. So, when we look specifically at overtime, we think about that for civilian overtime versus sworn overtime. So, when we look at civilian overtime, in fiscal '24 as of the third quarter, we had spent just over $28 million in the general fund. This year, we'd spend about 27, so we're down by about 4% compared to our trends from last year. Sworn overtime, on the other hand, is up from about $75.4 million last year at this time to about $82.8 million, or up by 10%. Now, one thing to keep in mind is that's partially driven by hours, but it's also driven by increased costs associated with the contracts that have gone into place for fire and police. So, with a higher salary for those positions, that trickles through to overtime costs as well. Citywide vacancies are actually down by about 26%. So, if we look at vacancies as of the end of the third quarter, we were at 1459 compared to just over 1,900 last year. Most of that growth that we're seeing, or most of that improvement that we're seeing in terms of filling positions is coming from civilian positions. And non-personnel spending is up by about 5% compared to the same period last year. So, last year, we were at about $357 million, this year, we're at about $375. So, what I'll do is I'll walk through each of the agencies and categories. So, we'll start with agencies that have a projected surplus, then we'll talk about agencies that are projected at budget, and then we'll wrap up with the agencies that have projected deficits. So, the comptroller's office is projected to have a $2 million surplus. This is driven by vacancy savings that we are seeing primarily in their audits department, as well as accounts payable. The orphans court is essentially projected at budget. They have a very small budget that's primarily staff costs. Legislative reference has about a $200,000 surplus. That is coming from savings on lease costs associated with the city's archives as they work through negotiating a new lease for that facility. Municipal zoning and appeals has about a $100,000 surplus. Again, that's coming from the savings from a vacant position. The state's attorney's office has a $5.5 million surplus. That is coming from savings around software costs, and then a number of vacant positions, particularly assistant state's attorney's positions. The environmental control board is projected to have about a $200,000 surplus. Again, this is coming from vacant positions. The city council has a $1.5 million surplus that's coming from vacant positions throughout the various district offices. The circuit court has a surplus of about $900,000. That's coming from savings around system and technology improvements, as well as vacant positions. The board of elections has about a $400,000 surplus. That's mostly coming from savings associated with funding that we had set aside for a new location, where we are not going to sign a lease for this year. The third quarter projection takes into account the final cost for the fall election that was administered by our team. The department of general services has a $1.4 million surplus. That's coming from, again, vacant positions, as well as lower holding costs for surplus school properties. The health department has a $4.1 million surplus. That's coming from vacant positions. The largest number of vacancies are in the school health service. The department of housing and community development has a $1.2 million surplus, again, coming from vacant positions. HR has an $800,000 surplus from their staffing levels. The library has a $1.3 million surplus. That is coming from savings from open positions. I do want to note that we have factored into account costs and back pay costs that are associated with their ongoing union negotiations with their newly-formed union. The office of the inspector general has about a $300,000 surplus. That's coming from some timing regarding implementing the new ethics software. The office of information and technology has a $100,000 surplus, and that is coming, this agency had a nearly $3 million projected deficit at the second quarter. What we found is that there were a number of charges for capital-related projects that the department was working on, that they had charged to the city's general fund, and so, the surplus is coming from their cleanup efforts to move costs to the appropriate place. The office of children and family success has a surplus of about $300,000, coming from vacant positions. Civic promotion is projected at budget, so those are grants to our civic promotion grantees, which would include the markets, visit Baltimore and the Baltimore Heritage area. The convention center hotel has about a $100,000 surplus, and that's coming from lower-than-anticipated debt service payments. And then, this final batch, the office of neighborhood safety and engagement has about an $800,000 surplus, and that's coming from anticipated spend down for the various grant programs administered by that team. The office of equity and civil rights has about a $400,000 surplus coming from vacancies. The planning department has about a $100,000 surplus, again, from vacancies. And then, finally, the department of public works has about a $6.1 million surplus. That's coming from the combination of savings on tipping fees, as well as lower year-to-date non-personnel spending. So, let's switch gears now and talk about the agencies with a projected deficit. So, the finance department is projected to have a $600,000 deficit, and that's coming from the unbudgeted use of outside contractual support for various functions within the department, including payroll, accounting, and then the finance systems that are used by the team, so that would be Workday and Munis. The fire department has a deficit of about $39.9 million. That's coming from overtime costs, the unbudgeted use of EMS contractual services, and higher-than-budgeted fleet costs, particularly maintenance. The liquor license board has a deficit of about $400,000. That is coming from staff costs, where they have made, staff costs both in terms of salary and overtime costs. The law department has a very small deficit, less than $100,000, that's coming from contractual spend specifically on IT systems. Our art and culture program has about a $400,000 deficit. Most of that is coming from the benefit costs that the city is required to pay for two of our facilities, and then some emergency repairs that had to happen at the Bromo Tower related to their sprinkler system. The convention complex has about a $4.4 million deficit. This deficit is associated to the arena, not to the convention center. So, under the terms of the operating agreement for the CFT arena, the city is required to share a portion of the admission and amusement tax that's generated from events at the arena with the operator, and the cost for that revenue sharing was not factored into the '25 budget. So, this deficit is almost entirely coming from what needs, the reimbursement that was made to CFT based off of that agreement. There is surplus revenue that the city has realized that can cover that increase. The office of employment development, or MOED, has about a $300,000 deficit. This is lower than what we were, this is a greater deficit than what we had previously, and that is based off of the final youth works cost from last summer. So, what happens is, the summer youth works program takes place in the first quarter, and then throughout the fiscal year, MOED receives sort of reimbursements from outside businesses that, and the philanthropic community that helps to support the program. And what we saw in fiscal '25 was that some of those reimbursements ended up coming in lower than what we had previously projected. The office of homeless services has a $1.6 million deficit, and that is coming primarily from making payments from last year in fiscal '25. And again, this is an improved projection compared to prior years, as the agency has gone through to do a reconciliation to ensure that grant expenses are hitting appropriate grants. The police department has a $41.7 million projected deficit. About $16 million of that is coming from costs associated with the ratified FOP contract that was signed in January. But, also embedded in that deficit is increased overtime costs, fleet costs, and then prior year invoices that were paid in fiscal '25. Wreckin' Parks has a $5.9 million deficit. That is coming from, primarily from park maintenance costs and facility maintenance costs that are exceeding the budgeted amount. The sheriff's office has a $1.9 million deficit. That's coming from overtime spending, as well as fleet costs above and beyond what was factored into the budget. And then, finally, the department of transportation has a $7.3 million deficit. That's coming from snow response costs. As I mentioned, our final cost for snow removal this winter was about $15.9 million. So, with that, I will pause and take any questions that you may have.
Thank you for the presentation, Director. I just want to mention that we've been joined by a member of the committee, our vice president, Sharon Green Middleton. We've also been joined by, thank you, we've also been joined by Councilman Mark Conway as well. Committee members, we're going to have two questions, and then we're going to move on to the Capitol Budget. Director, during the second quarter hearings, projection hearings, there were a few items that were mentioned. One of the items was regarding agencies with projected deficits, that they were placed on expenditure freezes for the remainder of the fiscal year. Is that still the case?
That's correct. That guidance that came from the city administrator, I believe, that guidance came out in late March, is still in place. And so, you know, we have additional review on personnel-related expenditures within those agencies. There's additional review that's happening with overtime spending within those agencies, and there is greater scrutiny regarding their purchasing activity. And what I would say is that for some of our agencies, we saw, we have seen where that additional review has either slowed spending to reduce deficits, or, you know, in the case of the IT department, completely flipped from a projected deficit to essentially being projected at budget.
Okay, so, you stated it was additional reviews. When you say additional reviews, does that still include what was mentioned during the second quarter projection hearings, that there's an actual pause on personnel hiring for these agencies? Is that still the case?
There's not a pause on hiring. So, if you have a funded position, you can still try, you can still work to recruit and fill that position. What we paused on were unbudgeted personnel-related actions. So, if you were trying to proceed with a, like, upgrading a position through a reclassification process where you did not have a defined offset, we are pausing on those actions. If you are trying to bring in additional contractual staff that was not budgeted, we're pausing on those types of actions. But, people can still fill if they have a funded vacant position.
What additional items are included within the reviews and the What, what additional items are included within the reviews and the approvals that were mentioned before by the CIO?
Yeah, so one of, on the, on the spending, on the non-personnel piece, on the spending side, there's additional scrutiny regarding P-card transactions. So we've gone through these agencies and deactivated P-cards except for the director and the, and their executive teams. And so we're seeing, you know, so there's additional review within, within, within the agency themselves on those types of expenditures. In terms of other contracts and items that are going before the Board of Estimates, those items always had to come through my office for the review, for review. But we are doing greater scrutiny and review of those. Part of the, the problem that we have with the procurement-related process in general is around multi-year contracting. So let's say, you know, my office needs to go enter into a contract for three years for a software system that we use to build the budget. The way that the contract is going to go through the Board of Estimates is it's going to show the, the value of that contract over three years versus how we have it budgeted. So let's say the three-year value of that is, is $300,000. That's what the Board of Estimates memo is going to show. Whereas in the budget, we're only budgeting $100,000 a year for each year. And so what I will say is that as we've transitioned to Workday in terms of how we translate that multi-year amount that was approved by the board into what is committed and encumbered in our financial system, there are still some kinks there that have to be worked out. And I, that is partially why we see, why it, why I would say it's, it's a little trickier in terms of monitoring some of this procurement spending, because that's where we get in a situation where if an agency gets way behind, we're going to see multiple years of payments on a contract in one year, even though we're only budgeting for the, the 12 months of the contract.
What about discretionary overtime spending?
Yeah, so that is being monitored closely by the, the deputy mayors for each of the, the respective portfolios. I know that is one area in particular within the public safety agencies that is being closely monitored to review those, you know, especially the discretionary piece of what is happening there, more intentionally to know what is driving their overtime and where do we have opportunities to slow some of that overtime spending.
Thank you, Director. VP Middleton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for this overview. Very informative. I, I want to just kind of go back to talking about the vacant positions again, because I noticed throughout your whole presentation, we all kept hearing, you know, vacant positions, 13 here, 10 there. And I guess at this point, and then one of your answers was that you, some of these vacancies are, can be put on pause. So my question is, I, I think we're at a time where you either fill the positions or you freeze them. And I think there really needs to be an investigation of, are these positions that, where people left voluntarily and they have to be refilled? Or are they positions that have been sitting and sitting and sitting? And I guess I'm concerned about that because I, I kind of started just listing some important things that are very important, you know, for helping services and resources with our communities. For example, our BG E-bills are, of course, have increased. I'm concerned for things like the Security Deposit Relief Act. Our constituency goes to the community action centers to get help for these programs. I think we need to be focused on how we're going to continue to support all of these programs throughout all of our agencies. We have, you mentioned vacancies in the library system. I know there's going to be a new library built, and Pratt, of course, needs the, some, they have to have the funding for those employees. So fire safety, we just had a very terrible fire last night in the 8th District. You know, that's safety. I know there was talk of raising EMS service fees. That's going to go on the backs of the, you know, customers, our, the people we, we try to protect again. DPW and our water bills have increased. I mean, I could go down a whole list of programs, and, and I just want to make sure that every single agency at the top of the list should be, how are we going to continue to do these resources? And really look at all these positions that you mentioned. We're at a time where should they be frozen to use that money to continue these services?
So I think one of, one of the things that, you know, I was really thinking about as we were putting together the slides, yes, there were a lot of agencies where I was saying that there was a vacant position. But some of those agencies that I were, that I was talking about, if you look at the percentage of their workforce compared to the overall position count in the city, they have really small position counts compared to our overall 14-plus-thousand positions that are in the budget and, you know, just over 9,000 that are in the city's general fund. So if you're the Environmental Control Board and you have less than 10 positions, if you have one vacant position that you're trying to get filled, that's going to throw off a significant surplus because you have a small budget and personnel in your budget is almost entirely personnel. So I think one of the things to keep in mind is that while you heard me say vacant position, vacant position, it's not a ton of money, because if you go and you look at the position counts in those agencies, they have small position counts. The other thing to keep in mind is that when, and I'm working for, I'm working on data for you all that will get submitted this week for a hearing we're having next week about vacancies. And so when we look at the length of our vacancies, it's down significantly since, you know, since the time that I've been here with you all in this position. So in the presentation, you taught, you heard me talk about our vacancy count citywide this year compared to where we were last year. We're down, you know, from 1,900, over 1,900 vacant positions to just under 1,500. So agencies are, are filling positions. When we look at the length of vacancies, almost 70% of our vacancies have been vacant for less than 18 months. So what that means is what we're seeing here is that there is a little bit of a churn. Like there always is like a natural level of turnover. And so even though we see some level of vacancies, these are not vacancies that have been sitting on the books forever. There just is a natural element of turnover that happens in city operations. The other thing that I will say is, when, we have to unpack this data, the vacancy data, in a, in a more intentional way to understand what's really happening on the ground. Because in our bigger agencies that have bigger position counts, vacancy, that, what's happening in those agencies could distort the overall trend, right? So what we, when we look, so one way that demonstrates itself is if we look at the vacancy counts for civilian versus sworn, we know that civilian vacancies are way down and sworn vacancies are way up. And that's driven by the fact that many of our, many of our civilian positions have been able to get filled over the last 12 months. But we've seen vacant, vacancy numbers for police officers continue to grow. We still sit at like a 50% vacancy rate for paramedics. So what I think we need to do is sort of, we need to identify, like, here are our top five vacancies classifications and sort of separate those out, and then look at the rest of how we're doing. Because when we break those top three vacancies out, we're actually sitting at about an 8% vacancy rate, which is what we were at pre-pandemic levels.
It's good to see you have a plan on how to proceed. And thank you for that extra talk about the vacancies. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Gray?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to have, make a committee request for, I guess, a week's time. So we're ready for next Thursday's hearing. If we could have a breakdown of all the vacancies by agency, in each agency, and also highlighting the Fire and Police Department, a breakdown of the civilian and sworn officers. I think it's really important for us to know those numbers. And it will be really important for us to have questions on how we are proactively filling those positions of need in the community. So do you have that, Talor?
So we are already working on that data request and to submit to you tomorrow.
Even better, thank you. Never mind. So to my question, how are inter-agency coordination issues being resolved in the context of the, of the frozen spending for certain agencies? Because I think about legal dumping, crosswalk graffiti. We have certain agencies that are in the deficit, other ones that are in the surplus. Certain agencies, they aren't spending. Is there any type of inter-agency coordination to make sure that despite the, the freeze in spending, that city services are still running as usual?
A lot of that work is happening in the city stat room through the regular stat meetings that are happening. And so those meetings continue to be convened by the OPI team. We're, you know, on a bi-weekly or monthly basis, we're checking in on, you know, all of these KPIs that would relate to these different city agencies. And so that allows us to, you know, monitor how agencies are doing in terms of performance. The other thing, the other piece of work that is being led very intentionally by the city administrator and her team is how are agencies getting ready for the upcoming summer season? And how are we ensuring that we're getting, you know, we have contracts in place for all of the programming and service changes that come around summer month programming? And again, much of that work, all of that work is being directed by the city administrator herself. And what I will say is that as we go through those conversations, you know, we're understanding sort of what we can, what is reasonable that we can accommodate within the funding that's remaining for fiscal '25, and then identifying, you know, how we handle that transition in fiscal years to fiscal '26 to figure out how agencies are, are planning their spending and their hiring around, A, what resources are available now, and sort of how do we plan for the, the budget getting adopted?
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. We're going to move into our presentation from Capitol at this time.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Parnome. I'm with the Department of Planning and pleased to present the fiscal year '25 quarter-three update on the capital budget. Before talking about quarter three, I wanted to give a little bit of context about the capital projects work stream. So within the work stream, we have three bodies of work. We have strategic planning in terms of preparing the budget and thinking strategically about what projects should be funded within the capital budget. We have project delivery, the actual delivery of the capital projects, implementing those capital projects. And then we have fiscal management, both on the front end in terms of thinking about how much resources are available for capital projects as well as looking at the spending on, on capital projects. And so across those three work streams, we really have a variety of agencies involved. So the Planning Department is presenting on the capital budget because we take a lead role in terms of the strategic planning role. But there are a number of other agencies involved in the capital projects work stream. So we have BBMR, Treasury Management, and BAPS that are all involved, different bureaus within the Department of Finance that are all involved in the fiscal management side. We have the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development and Boards and Commissions that, that participate in the delivery of projects. And then we have agencies themselves, the implementing agencies, DPW, Transportation, Wreckin' Parks, DGS, Housing and Community Development, Baltimore Development Corporation, BSIT, and Schools, that are really involved in all of the different aspects of the capital projects work stream. So they're thinking strategically in terms of planning what projects should be requested for funding. They are delivering those projects and making sure they're implemented. They're working with communities to understand priorities and to, to, to deliver projects kind of that, that meet community needs. And they are involved in the fiscal management in terms of spending on capital projects. And so we have representatives from those agencies here today if you have questions for them. So just to give a little bit more background in terms of the roles of each of those agencies that are involved in the capital projects work stream, you can see, starting with BBMR, that, that finance is identifying funding available for the capital budget, the local funding that's available. We get direction, the Planning Department gets direction from BBMR about what funding is available. And then planning works to develop the capital budget as part of the six-year capital improvement program. We staff the Planning Commission, which is charged with approving the six-year capital improvement program as well as capital transfers. The Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development facilitates process improvements to support the delivery of capital projects and provides project management support to, to agencies to assist them, particularly with complex projects that cross multiple agencies. Boards and commissions pre-qualifies construction-related contractors and design consultants. So that's kind of a procurement role that happens through boards and commissions. And then the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services provides capital accounting services for capital projects. They prepare the annual comprehensive financial report. Treasury Management, a third bureau within the Department of Finance, plays a role in terms of preparing and tracking bond issuances and staffing the Board of Finance, which approves the capital improvement program once the Planning Commission has approved it. And then, as I mentioned, agencies are involved in all of the different roles related to the capital budget. So they're inventorying, you know, what assets are within their portfolio. They're assessing those, they're maintaining those, they're operating those. And through that work, they're identifying capital needs through their own asset management work, through strategic planning for their agency, through engagement with the community. They're doing delivery of capital projects, both in terms of conceptualizing the projects, designing the projects, and delivering the projects. And then on the fiscal side, they're requesting funding, managing the budget, bidding projects, approving invoices, kind of all of the work related to, to the fiscal management of capital projects. So for today's hearing, I provided a report that shows the capital budget appropriations and expenditures through fiscal year, through quarter three of fiscal year '25. And this is a summary by agency of the report, but the report lists every individual project, not just that was funded in fiscal year '25, but that was funded over time, so that you can see kind of what the status of all capital projects is through quarter three of fiscal year '25. And so that report has total appropriations, all of the appropriations that have been received for that project. So that's what was in the capital budget for fiscal year '25, '24, '23, et cetera, going back. It shows you all of the expenditures for each of those projects as well as all of the obligations. So if an agency has something under contract, but they haven't yet paid that bill, you'll see that obligation as well. And then to provide a little bit of more recent And then to provide a little bit of more recent context, the report also includes for you a breakdown of, of those total appropriations, how much of those appropriations are from the FY '24 capital budget? Of those appropriations, how much is from the FY '25 capital budget? So that you can see what is recent in terms of appropriations. And then on the expenditure side, you can see expenditures that occurred in fiscal year '24 and expenditures that have occurred through quarter three of fiscal year '25. So, you can see where there's more recent expenditures as well. And again, as I mentioned, if you are interested in any of the specific projects that are listed in the report, we have representatives from the agencies that are here today, or if you contact me afterwards, I can work with the respective agency to get you more information about the status of any individual project. But I did want to give a little bit of context for the report. So, as you look through the report, you will see that there are some projects that have little or no spending, and you may be wondering why? Why are there projects that don't have, don't have much spending? And there are several different reasons why we have projects that have little to no spending. One reason is that projects need additional funding. So, in order for a project to be bid and awarded, the project needs to have the full funding to award that construction project. And in the past, we have budgeted projects over time due to limited funding. So, projects might be, you know, getting funds gradually over time, a million dollars this year, a million dollars the next year, a million dollars the next year, until they have enough funding to be able to award the project. And so if they don't have full funding for the project, they're not able to award it, and you won't see any spending. So, you can see an example here for the Abel-Woman Building. Here, you can see that there are $36 million in appropriations. There is some spending for the project, there's some, some design work that's been done, but the majority of that $36 million hasn't been spent yet. And the reason for that is that project is an $80 million project. And so until there's $80 million in appropriations with revenue to back it up, DGS is not able to award that project. I do want to note that, starting in fiscal year '26, we put in place a new policy that we are fully funding a construction phase in a single year. So, this particular issue will go away over time because we will not be funding things incrementally a million dollars per year until we get enough funding. We will be fully funding construction in a single fiscal year, with a few exceptions, but that is generally kind of a shift that we're making, starting with fiscal year '26. Another reason that you may see, excuse me, that you may see little to no spending for a project is that there are multiple PRJs. These are the unique identifiers for the projects, multiple PRJs that are for the same purpose. So, and you may see spending only in one of them, but not in the other one. So, if you happen to be looking at one that doesn't have spending, you may think that nothing is happening with that project, but there may be another line item in the report where that spending is occurring. And the reason there's multiple PRJs for the same project, there are at least two reasons. One reason is that historically, we have budgeted in reserve accounts, and so funding was placed in a reserve account and then had to be transferred to an active account before an agency could spend it. And so you had multiple accounts for the same purpose, a reserve and an active. Another reason that you may see this is through the transition to Workday and Adaptive, which is our budgeting software, multiple PRJs were created in some cases. And so you can see the example here that for the Department of Housing and Community Development, there are multiple projects for the 800 block of Edmondson Avenue. And if you only looked at the first one, PRJ 002316, you would think that nothing is happening with that project because there's no spending shown. But if you look at the second project, PRJ 002321, you can see that there's been significant spending on that project because that project has been moving forward. So, again, we have, we are working to address this issue. So, recently, we went to the Board of Estimates and the Planning Commission to consolidate balances for hundreds of projects, and so that consolidation will show when we come back to you in quarter four, and so you will see fewer duplicate projects. And we're going to be doing more transfers as needed in the future. So, a third reason that you may see projects that have little to no spending is that there are appropriations that don't have revenue associated with them. So, we have, we have cases where there are state appropriations or federal appropriations that were included in the budget at the time that we were preparing the budget. We were optimistic that we might receive those funds, but we did not receive them for one reason or another. And so those appropriations exist without any revenue to back them up. And so there's been no spending because, because there's no revenue. It's just, just appropriations without any revenue. And again, we're working on a solution here. So, we also went to the Board of Estimates and Planning Commission recently to de-appropriate those state and federal appropriations that do not have revenue. And again, that will show in the quarter four reporting. So, you will no longer see that those appropriations for state and federal appropriations that don't have revenue for all of those items that went to BOE in April. We are also, going forward, starting with fiscal year '25, working with agencies to confirm that the funding is in place before including it in the budget, so that we will minimize this issue going forward. So, in the past, we were very optimistic in terms of including state and federal appropriations in the budget if there was any possibility that we might receive those, because we didn't want to have to come back and do a supplemental. But now, the guidance is we need to confirm that that, that that state and federal funding has been received, that we have an award of a grant, or that it's reoccurring funding before we include it in the budget. So, we, again, expect this to be minimized going forward, and we're working on cleanup of the existing appropriations. And then lastly, you may see projects that don't have significant spending yet, because capital projects take time. They take significant amount of time to design and to build complex projects. So, in particular, if the project received funding more recently, if you see that there was a budget in FY '24 or FY '25, you may not see significant spending yet, because the agency is still working through the process of concept and design and working with the community before, before you're seeing those big expenditures with construction. So, here's an example of a project from the Department of Transportation. You can see that there's total appropriations of 14 and a half million, and there's expenditures of about 700,000. So, there are some expenditures, but you might wonder, why aren't there more expenditures? Well, if you look in the column for FY '24 capital budget and FY '25 capital budget, you'll see that the vast majority of that 14 million was appropriated in the last two years. So, 13, 14 million of that 14 and a half million was just appropriated this fiscal year and last fiscal year. So, the process for spending capital projects is going to take time. That there's just, that is kind of the nature of capital projects. But we're certainly working to, to address delays that are not necessary, and the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development is really leading that process. And Andrew Aileshire, who's the acting director of that office, is here and can speak if the council has any questions about the steps that they're taking to streamline the process for delivering capital projects. And so with that, I will pause for any questions.
Thank you. My few questions were answered within your report, committee members and noncommittee members. The report that is being referenced is within the packet for this bill. If you need an extra copy of the packet, please see our committee staff. Vice President Middleton, did you have any questions?
I just want to make a statement. I'm glad you're, I guess, last statement was the most important statement. Now that we're, I guess, braced to see what's happening with state funding and, of course, our federal funding, that you're making the agencies have their funding in place, I think that's very important as we kind of approve supplementals and where they will maneuver and go to help with the resources that we need to put out in our neighborhoods for our communities.
Yeah, so with this new guidance, we do expect that the council will be seeing more supplementals than you've seen in the past, because if the agency doesn't have the award in place at the time that we're preparing the budget, and they get that award, you know, once the budget is already prepared or into the start of the fiscal year, they're going to need to go through the supplemental process. So, we do expect that the council will be, will be seeing more of those, and we appreciate your, your understanding of that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gray?
Thank you. Could you elaborate on your plan to fully fund construction in a single fiscal year starting FY '26? And how would that mitigate the delays that we've seen this year in multiple projects?
If you want to talk a little bit about examples of delays, I can try and answer more specifically, but, but an example is we are looking to build a new Northeast Police District Station, and in the past, we might have funded that, you know, five million one year, five million another year, five million another year, because we don't have enough to, you know, fund something at that scale all in one year. What we're looking to do is we have some funds accumulated from prior years, and then we are going to, in fiscal year '27, in the six-year program, fully fund the remainder based on the cost estimate that we have. So, we have increases in the capital budget, we have additional bond revenue, starting in FY '26, and so we're using that to put in place this new guidance.
Okay. And with that, scale back, additional capital investments or like commitments, seeing that if we're trying to fund projects every year fully, instead of, you know, piecemealing it every year, will we, will there be a, I guess, a downsize in the number of capital projects that we are improving, that we are approving each year?
Yes, I suspect that that will be the result.
Okay. And then, I guess these all count as one question, follow-ups, but how does that affect each council district? And more importantly, what is the equity component in making sure that in the fiscal year, at least every council district with a need has a capital project being approved?
Yeah. So, we are, as we get into FY '26, we're going to provide for the council a breakdown of the proposed budget by council district, to the extent that we have location, you know, information available to us. So, within the next week or so, you should be getting that for fiscal year '26, and you'll be able to see the breakdown by council district.
Thank you. I really appreciate you guys being a little just proactive in trying to figure this out. I know it's hard for us to stand in front of our constituents and at one point tell them, hey, this amazing project is happening, and it's going to be done in 2026, and then we get there, and then it's 2029, and everyone's just sitting there, and at that point, no one's excited. They're just like, when is this going to be done? So, it's really exciting to know that you guys are really thinking about ways to make sure that you see things through. And I just want to make sure that we have, I think I made the committee request last time, I just want to make sure, I think I saw it, but I want to ensure that we have the capital projects for this year broken down by council districts?
Yes, we provided '24 and '25. If you need it again, let me know.
No, no, I, I looked at it, but I just wanted to confirm, just wanted to record. So, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, sure.
We've also been joined by Council President Cohen. We thank you for your presentation. We're going to be moving on to city schools at this time. And for city schools, you have 12 minutes for your presentation. Thank you.
Okay, 12 minutes, okay.
Whenever you're ready.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to extend greetings to everyone on behalf of City Schools Chief Financial Officer, Chris Doherty. So, we send our greetings to the City Council Finance and Performance Committee, council members.
And can you, can you speak into the mic, please? Thank you.
Okay, is that better?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Okay, good morning, everyone. On behalf of City Schools Chief Financial Officer, Chris Doherty, I'd like to extend greetings to the City Council. A little bit louder, okay. Okay, is that better? Or, okay, all right, again, greetings to everyone, so I won't say that again for a third time. My name is Mary Ann Cox. I'm the Deputy Chief Financial Officer for City Schools, and I'm here to present a, the financial results for City Schools as of year-to-date March 2025, which is nine months of our fiscal year. We recognize that external parties have an interest in our financial results, and we're happy to share the information with them. Okay. The second slide, this is the table of contents of our presentation. The purpose of the presentation actually is for compliance with the local legislation, which is presented on the next page, and I will present information on the FY '25 quarter three general fund revenues, expenditures, and a summary. Okay, starting with the revenue, you can see our total budget is 1.4 billion, and at this point, our actual revenue totals about 1.2 billion. City schools funding, there's approximately 97% of it is state and local funding, and of that approximately 70% is state funding. So, the state funding being our largest revenue source that affects the percentages outstanding at any point in time. The, the timing of our receipts from the state is that we get six quarterly, six payments a year. At this point, year-to-date March, we have received five of them, so that that would mean there should be around 17% left to be received, and that's exactly what we see in this, the state of Maryland line, there's a percentage balance of 16.8%. In terms of a variance from the original budget to where we are now, what we know now, please know that there is a timing difference, because when we prepare our budget, we base it on the January estimates provided by the Maryland State Department of Education, and also our actuals include some true-ups and accrual reversals, things like that. Please know that our funding formulas are based on enrollment and relative wealth to the rest of the state. These based on enrollment and relative wealth to the rest of the state. These funding formulas, which now are derived from a car win and the blueprint legislation, in addition to assigning or determining what our state revenue is, it also does the same thing for the the local revenue. The local revenue is identified as the minimum required contribution. And we do a comparison, they do a comparison as well, of the minimum required contributions versus the historical maintenance of effort calculation. And whichever is higher, that's what the LEAs get funded. So, you know, at this point, we have received 70.2%, like the state revenue is 70.2% of the total, and the local revenue is 26.9% of the total. So we're trending right at our expected amounts. There's a little variance between the January budget and the final, but not that much. I wanted to just touch on what goes into our federal revenues. For city schools, our federal revenues, ROTC reimbursements, E-rate, which is reimbursed by USAC, as is the Emergency Connectivity Fund. And we also have the IRS subsidy and FEMA reimbursements. When you look at the federal revenue for year-to-date, you can see that the $18 million actual greatly exceeds the $5.4 million budgeted. This is because in the third quarter of FY 2025, City Schools received the reimbursement for FEMA 4 in the amount of 9.1 million, and we received funding from the Emergency Connectivity Fund of 8.3 million. So there is some uncertainty about when we might get that funding, what year we might record it, and what year we might receive it. So the next revenue item is investment earnings, and you can see that we have a four and a half million budgeted with 18.6 million actual. I do want to point out that just as was noted in the presentation for the city of Baltimore, there's a couple of factors that that affect this investment earnings. We're well aware, as goes the T-bill rate, so goes our investment income. And we all understand that in 2024, the T-bill rates hit a historic high. Well, they're coming down. So we no longer achieve that kind of level of of investment income. And in addition, City Schools has done a certain amount of transfer of funds to the capital project funds to fund certain capital projects that would not be funded by the state and local capital projects funding that we receive. So with the two of those factors playing in, right now, we have 18.6 million in investment earnings. For comparison, the FY 24 number for the full year was 40.2 million. For '23, it was 19.4. FY '22 was 1.1 million. And in FY '21, we had $24,000 compared to 18 million, which we're in now. So that'll tell you that '21 was pre-COVID, and it was the time when interest rates, T-bill rates were approximating 0%. The other item I wanted to talk to you about was what's another revenue. And I'm mindful of our time constraints. So it's it's basically everything that doesn't go on another line. The largest items in there would be MSA revenue, which I believe this year is budgeted in excess of 4 million, and our reimbursement agreements, which I believe were over 3 million last year. So the rest of it is everything else that's not budgeted anywhere. I could give you the details if requested. The next slide is City Schools General Fund Expenditures by Category Year-to-Date. We, as an LEA in the state of Maryland, are required to record and report our financial transactions on the basis of MSD category. So that's what this is. And, you know, some of the category names kind of tell you what it is. But there's there's some that, in accordance with the MSD Finance Manual, the costs aren't quite where you would think. An example is administration has IT costs. So there's there's some things placed where you wouldn't expect them. But that's why we report here, because this is how our final financial statements go, and we are required to report by category. The next slide is the General Fund Expenditures by Object, which is the more easily recognizable expenditures that we have. Being an LEA, our expenditures track what everybody else's do as well. Approximately 75% of our budget is salaries and benefits. So of the salary and benefit total of approximately 75%, almost 56% is salary and wages, with the remainders being fringe. I do want to point out that utilities and other charges, that is where we record the $20 million payment that City Schools pays to MSA. Of that $20 million payment each year, 10 million is for the City Schools' contribution to the 21st Century Program, and 10 million is on behalf of the city of Baltimore. And that is related to the flowing through of revenue and expenditures for the retiree health benefits and the impact that has on guaranteed tax-based income. So City Schools would get a little additional guaranteed tax-based income, and some of that goes towards making that contribution on behalf of the city of Baltimore. I want to point out that the, all right, that's the MSA payments. In terms of comparing this year to last year, last year, our indirect cost recovery, which is the administrative credit that the General Fund gets for administrative work on grants, last year was all-time high, $9 million, or something very close to $9 million. And we received that because of the COVID funding. The expenditures in '24 for the COVID funding were probably the highest of all the years of the COVID grants. And the actual expenditures for COVID in the City Schools FY 2025 expenditures will be the first quarter. So the grant closed 9:30 2024. And the only thing that can be done after that is the liquidation of encumbrances. And there had been an agreement about the extending that liquidation period. And at first, it was well over a year. And now it was cut back to March. And just yesterday, we found out it was extended to May. So we are getting a definite benefit for giving us the opportunity to submit additional liquidated encumbrances for reimbursement from the Fed. So we're very grateful for that. I wanted to point out that transfers is one of the larger numbers here as well. Transfers for City Schools includes, the largest one is the non-public tuition for children, our children who attend the non-public schools as, you know, required by their IEPs. It also includes costs for the out-of-county living arrangements and informal kinship care, which relates to a relocation of a student for various legal or familial reasons. And of course, the seed school tuition goes here, and also the educational costs that we pay DJS and DHS. So.
Thank you. Ms. Cox, could you wrap this up within the next one or two minutes? Thank you. I know you have one additional slide.
Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, last slide. Biggest thing for the last slide is the number in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 column, where it just says, at this point in time, we have an excess of revenue over expenditures, which we would expect to have at this point, a year-to-date nine months. I do want to point out that City Schools, we close our books earlier than the city of Baltimore. We have to have our audited financial statements completed by 9:30. We have a lot of year-end closing adjustments that we record in the fourth periods, in the fourth quarter. So that will eat up a certain amount of of those results. But at least at this point in time, we do have an excess of revenue over expenditures. So are there any questions? Is there anything I can help anyone with or provide further information?
Thank you so much for your presentation. We're going to go to Vice President Middleton.
Thank you for sharing those expenditures. I notice on the one of the slides, community service, it doesn't really have much of anything listed. Why?
This is the general fund.
Oh, speaking of.
So sorry. This is the general fund report. We have community service expenditures on special revenue fund on grants. So if you like, I can look at what those numbers are on the grants and provide some information. But typically, we have very little on the general fund.
Can you provide us, I guess, the titles of the grants?
Certainly.
And and that information as well?
The ones with the community service?
Yes.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Certainly.
And student health services, what exactly would are you talking about for student health services? Because it doesn't look like a lot of money.
Actually, the student health services there, I'm looking at what it is. Yes, that is basically the the general fund portion of the nursing services in the schools. So that certainly, we have some on on other locations. But that is, you know, we are required per comar to provide nursing services in our schools. And with the blueprint, it got even more specific, you know, about they didn't want LPNs, they wanted registered nurses and things like that. So we have some of that on grants. And of course, we are we are in conversation with the Health Department in terms of interpreting what the 2019 legislation meant. So we're we're close to resolving that, I believe. But that's that's what that is. It's the nursing services.
Thank you. And looking at all these numbers, what would you say that we, as a council, should really pay attention to that might be in danger or ways we can advocate and help?
When I look at these numbers, the ones that that have the biggest impact to me is salaries and and benefits. Because so much of our costs relate to that. Even a small swing in in those percentages can produce a larger impact. So we are mindful of it too. And just as was discussed in the city of Baltimore, we have vacancies, you know, that you certainly tried to cut down on. And we are making an effort to fill vacancies. So there's there's a lot of different reasons. But we pay special attention to salary and wages and benefits.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Gray.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Looking over the expenditures by category, $156 million in unspent funds for instructional services, only hitting the 34% unspent for student transportation and special education. Those numbers are hefty. Could you go into your plans to make sure that all dollars are going to be spent by the end of the fiscal year? Because when I look at student transportation, there was just an article out saying how difficult it is for kids to get to school. Special education is a huge, a huge issue. Instructional services, they have that much not spent at this point. I just want to know what the plan is. Do you have a plan? And do you see yourself spinning it down in meaningful ways?
Yes, there is a particular sensitivity this year to the student transportation costs. As you're probably aware, we transport mostly to special ed students. And typically, special ed students who have transportation and are IEPs. So we we must provide the service to our special ed students. So like any other contractual service that we have, we put the contracts out on bid every so many years. And I believe that we are seeing the impact of the last bid this year, so that there were significant increases in the costs for student transportation, which I believe might not have been budgeted. So we have to go looking in some of the other categories and objects to free up money so that we can make sure that we pay those additional transportation costs. But that's that's one that, you know, we're subject to the market. You know, we we put the RFP out, and how they respond, we must transport the students. So we we have to work it out.
Yeah. And and are we opening up the search for qualified vendors that will be able to fulfill some of the issues you have in like making sure that we can find the right people? You're saying you're opening up a RFP. Do we have a, are we expanding our vendors list to make sure that we have those that are qualified, you know, whatever the gamut is? There are a lot of qualified businesses in the city that that can transport our babies to and from school, that could give the instructional learning that these kids so desperately need. You know, what are we doing as far as making sure that we are selecting and expanding the right vendors?
Okay, we had we had a meeting of sorts yesterday on transportation. And you could see by the list of vendors that we have some some very large vendors, and we also support smaller vendors. We encourage smaller vendors to come work for us, you know, as long as they can prove that they're qualified. If you would want some more specific information about the process, I'd be happy to have our Director of Procurement provide some information on what we did when we put that out for bid and how we tried to solicit additional, because it's better for us to have additional vendors, you know, and not have us be so dependent on one. So we try to open it up as best we can. But as you know, with transportation of students being a very delicate area, we have to be very certain that they meet all the qualification. And there's a lot of training and, you know, everything. And there's aides on the buses and, you know, and bands versus that. So there are a lot of requirements, but I'm happy to have them, have our procurement director get back with you for what we did to expand our vendor base.
Yeah, no, that'll be great. And just also know that the job of the council isn't just to ask you questions, it's to assist you in any outreach needs. So if you ever need to lean on us, please, we want to make sure that our kids have the best, and our staff to 100%.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Oh, yeah. And one more question about the personnel. You guys said, you know, staffing is, it can be challenging. You know, I didn't do my research on this, so you may have a program already. But are you tapping into the colleges that we have, universities in Baltimore City?
Oh, certainly.
Coppin, Mervin, Morgan, do we have like up and running substantial like pipeline programs to ensure that these people are coming and not going anywhere else, to Baltimore County and Aronel County? I know a few friends that went to these other municipalities or local localities inside of Baltimore City. And it could have been for various range of other reasons. But the fact that we're having people grow up in Baltimore, learn in Baltimore, go to college in Baltimore, and teach somewhere else doesn't reflect good on us. So what are you guys doing in a substantial way to make sure that we have programs in place so these amazing teachers are teaching in Baltimore?
Yes, that's a good question. And we're happy to bring out, we do have various pipeline programs. And I'd be happy to have the CH, the Chief Academic Officer, as well as the Office of Human Capital, provide a summary of our efforts in this regard. Certainly, we we also have nursing, we have some contracts with university partners to provide nursing services. And we hope that they'll go from being, you know, you know, coming from the three universities that we use and come to work for City Schools when we have an opening. And we hire. opening, and we hire nurses directly, which is what we're considering moving to now. So yes, we reach out at every opportunity and are appreciative of what, but we'll get you specific information on that.
Councilwoman Melissa Broom, City Schools Legislative Affairs, good to see you. I just was going to mention or remind everyone that our CFO will be here in two days, I think, for our FY '25 budget overview hearing, so I'm noting your great questions and interest in transportation and the pipelines, all these things. We can bring some of that later this week and then also to our, as the CEO prepares for our annual budget hearing, it's just good to know what some of the, you know, areas of focus could be and what we bring to you when we have the whole, more of the cabinet here that can answer these kinds of questions.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We're going to recess this hearing and take a brief, three-minute break before we start our next one.
Good, thank you.
We're going to start with Council Bill 25-0036, Property Taxes, Baltimore City Payment in Lieu of Taxes Task Force. Just for the agenda, we're going to be hearing from the sponsor of the bill for a brief introduction regarding her bill. Then we're going to be moving into agency reports. We're going to briefly review amendments. We're going to have questions from the committee, and then we're going to have testimony from folks who have signed up for testimony. You will have two minutes for testimony. I will explain that when we get closer to it. And at this time, we're going to hear from Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Today's legislation is an opportunity to establish a democratic, fair and transparent process to ensure that our city's financial landscape is impactful to our community. In collaboration with community, labor, our city leaders and our anchor institutions, we have done a lot for Baltimore City. We provide employment, quality education and vital healthcare services. We want to make sure we build upon this partnership to ensure that we are in lockstep. Our envisioned pilot task force will include our community and labor groups, as well as our anchor institutions working alongside city leaders. And that radical transparency is the crux of government efficiency and the way that government, the way that government, industry leaders and coalitions should work with community at the center. The central goal of this pilot task force is to educate and empower Baltimore and its progress of our financial landscape, the economic vitality and inputs from our eds and meds, and the collective overall community impact. Colleagues, you have the following amendments from all stakeholders, including MOGR. These have been shared with the 14 eds and meds, the City Council President's office and the coalition leaders for maximum stakeholder engagement. These amendments that are presented today along with this legislation are the product of hours of dialogue and consensus building to a maximally productive and impactful task force. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're going to get right into our agency reports. Law Department.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hillary Ruley, on behalf of the Law Department. Generally, we approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency. You certainly have a task force. We do require an amendment on the bill on page three, line 20, should be stricken because the city solicitor can't be both the lawyer for this entity and on the entity. So you just need to strike that, but other than that, we approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. And Department of Finance.
Hi, good morning. Bob Sennemy, Deputy Director, Department of Finance. Just wanted to share a few quick comments on our bill to give our perspective on it. So first, just as background, you know, nonprofit organizations, of course, are exempt from property tax by state law. That includes any organizations with a charitable or educational or religious mission. Government entities are also exempt. Just as background for context, in Baltimore, about 27% of our property tax base is exempt from taxation. If you look at the rest of the state of Maryland combined, it's about nine and a half percent. So just gives you a little bit of context on how big of an issue this is for Baltimore City compared to, you know, some of our neighbors in Maryland. The pilot agreement, the premise of the agreement historically is that, you know, these large tax-exempt organizations, they do benefit from city services. You know, some of them are obvious things like public safety, if there's a big emergency or crime, you know, on one of those campuses, our emergency folks respond to those type of incidents. But there's also some things you might not think about, things like street cleaning, you know, media and maintenance, snow removal, you know, a lot of streets go through some of these campuses, you know, public-owned streets, so some of our services do touch those institutions as well. Historically, what we've done to try to account for that is we've asked these institutions to make voluntary contributions into our general fund. And the agreement we have in place now collectively generates about $6 million for the city's general fund annually. It was a 10-year agreement, and that one, that agreement expires at the end of fiscal 2026. Just for context, if those institutions were fully taxable, if they were paying the rate that other private owners were, those, the institutions that are part of the current agreement would generate over $100 million of tax revenue compared to the $6 million collectively we get in the current agreement. So our bill report kind of shows the current agreement, what it would be at full taxation, what the current agreement generates from each of those institutions. Just for our thoughts on this bill, I mean, this bill creates a task force to look at the issue and to help educate the public and to kind of generate input into the new agreement. And we support the idea of the task force, especially the idea of helping to educate the public and raise awareness about the importance of this agreement. There was one thing that we would suggest, so there was one provision in the task force that has, the task force recommending the standard formula that would be used to, you know, create a new agreement or how we would go, you know, seeking additional contributions going forward from these institutions. I just want to say that is a little bit duplicative of work that's already underway. You know, we've been looking at that, our department has been looking at that, we've been looking at other models in other cities. Often you hear mentioned, you know, the Boston Agreement or New Haven, which includes Yale University, and Providence, Rhode Island, which includes Brown and some other universities. So we've looked at those models and have already started, you know, trying to figure out what could be useful for the city to use going forward. And that's all deliberative information, though, so during sensitive negotiations, so we wouldn't want that to be too far out there on the public. But aside from that, we support the intent of this bill, and we stand ready to support the committee and the task force if and when it does get created to support and provide information as we see fit. Thank you.
Thank you. Office of the Comptroller.
Good morning. Casey Kelleher for the Office of the Comptroller. The Office of the Comptroller submitted a report favorable with amendments. I'll give a few remarks before I dive into the amendments. They've been shared with the committee this morning. So we generally support this task force as an important first step towards addressing the fiscal imbalance that large nonprofit institutions can contribute to when they consume city services without paying property taxes to the general fund. We generally support so much that about a year ago, we released a report examining pilot programs in different areas along the Northeast and peer cities to offer some recommendations on these voluntary payment schemes. That report's on our website, and I summarize the key findings in my bill reports. I won't go into that, but I'm glad to see that this legislation really embodies a lot of those recommendations and goals of making this a transparent process and making it also a process in between the city and the institutions that we're going to be negotiating with. We also want to note that one thing our report found, and I can't emphasize this enough, is that these voluntary payment schemes should last for at least 10 years to ensure the fiscal reliability of everyone involved. Our amendments, we have about four amendments, and I'll go through them. The number one amendment, we, first amendment we have discusses the composition of the task force. We recommend narrowing the task force down from 17 to nine people to reflect the Boston model. We found that that was, you know, the most real, you know, easy to manage structure to allow for coherent discussion, as well as reflect a wide body of people to contribute. So I talk about that composition in our bill report, but we narrowed it down to two university reps, two hospital reps, two business reps, one union rep and one community org rep and one council person. And this, we also want to mention that this would exclude all citywide elected officials as members, including the council president, the comptroller and the mayor. I can talk a little bit more about that later. As I said, this also limits it to one union representation. Further down, another amendment we have and are offering to the committee is to disqualify registered lobbyists from the task force unless they are full-time employees of the nonprofit or medical institutions and are appointed by the mayor. We believe this ensures participation from embedded institutional voices, you know, but it also balances by not having professional lobbyists, but allows institutions directly affected to bring their voice to the table. The last amendment, and sorry, since I don't have the most recent copy in front of me, the last amendment we're offering is also in the spirit of collaboration, is that we're proposing to send the task force's recommendations to the Board of Estimates. The Board of Estimates is the body that will eventually have to approve any pilot agreement that happens between the meds and eds and the city, and thus they should be taken into consideration and understand the recommendations that this task force puts forward. And that is about it. We really want to say that we really commend the bill sponsor and this committee for taking up this difficult task of looking at something, especially in a time of fiscal uncertainty. And we, yeah, we hope the committee can support this bill along with our amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Porter, can you briefly explain your amendments, please?
Sure. And so just to give clarity to the committee, these amendments are a compilation of MOGR's amendments and the stakeholder engagement with union and also with some input from our eds and meds institution as well. So the first amendment goes with a special effective date to include 30 days out, 30 days after the ordinance is enacted. Amendment number two strikes force within the Office of the City Comptroller and just substitutes force. Amendment three strikes five and substitutes three. And that has to do with the composition of the workers, so Baltimore City hospital workers, Baltimore City private university workers and Baltimore City public sector workers. And then it also, on page three, line one, strikes and, and on that same page, strikes association and substitutes association from an institution located in Baltimore City. That was something that was agreed upon, not only within the With Us For Us Coalition, but also with MOGR as well. And number two, making sure that we have two city residents demonstrated with experience with municipal and nonprofit financing agreement. That was something suggested and agreed upon by stakeholders as well. Amendment number four, strikes lines 10 and 11 in their entirities and substitutes, the mayor shall designate a member of the task force to service the chair and to be confirmed by the city council. That was something very important, to make sure that we had council representation with the designation of that chair. Amendment number five, on page four, line 17, before and inserts, inserts one, and on that same page, in the same line, strikes members and substitutes the members of the voting task force. That's an opportunity for us, when we're talking about voting, to make sure that ex-official members do not vote, and having that explicitly displayed in the language. Amendment number six, inserts disqualifications. This was something that we agree with the comptroller on having and making sure that an individual on the task force may be, may not serve on the task force if that individual is required to register with the Ethics Board under subtitle eight, which includes lobbying of Article Eight of the City Code. Amendment number seven, on page four, line 24, strikes comptroller and substitutes the Director of Finance. We agree with the Director of Finance within their report to ensure that the Department of Finance staffs this particular task force as opposed to the comptroller. Amendment number eight, on page five, before line three, inserts, in conjunction with the Department of Finance, assess and account for each institution's assets and city services utilization. That actually agrees with the Director of, the Director of Finance stating that the standardized formula is something that will not be constituted under this task force. We wanted to make sure that we had some sort of account of the process so that community members within the coalition have an opportunity to assess and account for each institution's financial assets and also their city services utilization. So I'm grateful that the Department of Finance agrees with us in that manner. And then last but certainly not least, amendment number five, on page five, before line 20, this is where we insert the duties of, the last duty of the task force, which includes the assessment of each institution and assets of city service utilization required by subsection 13-6, subsection one. And then last but certainly not least, when we're talking about the annual report, we provide a brief description of each educational event and activity held by the task force, including the date, time and location of the event and that, of the event or activity to remain transparent, not only with all stakeholders, but with the mayor's administration as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. For MOGR and just to be transparent, just knowing that this is the first time that the committee has seen these finalized amendments, is there anything that you would like to add?
No, Madam Chair. I think the sponsor did a good job explaining the amendments.
And can you just provide your name for the record?
Tyler Chanel, Deputy Director for Local Affairs and the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. Yeah, I think the sponsor did a good job explaining the amendments that we've kind of talked about over a period of time. We're obviously just seeing the amendments from the comptroller's office as well, so we're just taking a look at everything.
Does that cover all of the amendments for all of the agencies?
Yes. Yeah, because Hillary talked about the Law Department amendments, Finance didn't have any amendments, and then the package that was the original MOGR package, which was just turned into a package of sponsor amendments.
We're going to go into, thank you, we're going to go into questions at this time. Committee members, did you have any questions regarding establishment of the task force?
I'd like to just say, you know, I have always been a person that when it's, item as important as this, and all of a sudden we get last-minute amendments from the comptroller's office especially, and this is a very important subject. And I, right away, just kind of see some discrepancies between the comptroller's office and the mayor's office. And it sounds to, you know, I, it's, why isn't the comptroller here when this is a very important subject, number one? And number two, you know, we have to have some kind of dialogue and agreement between the two offices. And the council office does not want to get in the middle of a discrepancy between the two outside entities. So for me right now, that's a problem that still, these offices still need to have conversation about this. And I'm, you know, I've never liked last-minute amendments jumping in. So, Madam Chair, that's my two cents.
Thank you for your comment. Councilmember Gray, did you have any questions or?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, from the comptroller's amendments, are they, are there any of those amendments that the MOGR or the sponsor, are they willing to accept?
Thank you for that question, Councilman. I mean, again, obviously, we, we're just receiving the amendments today as well. I mean, we'll certainly appreciate the time to have a conversation with the comptroller's office about their amendments, and then we can come back to you all.
And for clarity, receiving, upon receiving the amendments this morning, we are willing to accept amendments three and four and reject one and two.
Okay, well, I think you all need to have a conversation offline about these amendments prior. prior. Do we have any additional questions or comments?
Just a clarification in seeking to understand and reconcile these two sets of amendments. So, in the mayor's version, looking at amendment number seven, it says, "On page four and line 24, strike comptroller and substitute director of finance," and on the same page, in that line, strike office of comptroller and submit Department of Finance. So, in essence, the proposal here from the administration is to remove the comptroller and insert the Finance Department.
Yeah, so the Finance Department would provide staff to the task force as opposed to the comptroller's office.
Okay. Comptroller staff, is there a response? Has that been a conversation?
Yes, we're fine with that. We support it. We understand the reasoning for it.
And Mr. President, just to add to that, that was one of the original conversations where we had, where the comptroller expressed that the staffing model that would need to be for this task force would be over and above what they currently have now. So, with the staffing of this particular task force, there would be additional funds that were needed to staff this task force. And so, we decided very early on that the Department of Finance, given that they have the subject matter expertise and the data within-house, we thought that it would be a great transition to have the Department of Finance as opposed to the comptroller staffing it. But the comptroller is still a very important, very important member of the composition of the task force.
Noted. Thank you, Madam Chair.
My comment for all is to make sure that, as you guys have these conversations, and I know that they will be done with, you know, a sense of urgency, as you have these conversations, to make sure that amendments are shared with the committee, not the morning of, so we can actually have time to review them. And that's it. Let's just make sure that we get the amendments to the committee members, the ones that have to vote on this task force, to make sure that we have the information that we need. Thank you. At this time, we're going to go into public testimony. I'm going to be calling from the list of folks who signed up. You will have two minutes to provide your testimony. There will be a timer that will be listed there to also assist you with indicating the appropriate time that you have. And we're going to start with Jermaine Johnson. And once you come up, I just need for you to state your first and your last name for the record. If you are with an organization, to also provide the organization that you're with. Jermaine Johnson.
My name is Jada Powell. I am the Community School Coordinator at Robert W. Coleman Elementary School. I'm here to speak on the partnership that has deeply impacted our school community in countless meaningful ways on ongoing collaboration with the University of Maryland Medical Center. For over 10 years, University of Maryland Medical Center has been a vital partner to our school, providing support, resources, and heartfelt service to our students and our families. Their commitment goes beyond traditional expectations rooted in compassion, consistency, and a real understanding of what it means to serve a community. One of the standout initiatives has been a six-week anti-bullying workshop that they held at our school, providing for our fourth and fifth grade girls. This was not just a series of lessons, it was an empowering experience that culminated with our students being invited to the University of Maryland Medical Center Medtown. That visit symbolized something powerful that our girls are seen, valued, and supported far beyond the school walls. University of Maryland has also held various hygiene workshops for our third through fifth grade students, which was essential but often overlooked part of students' wellness and self-esteem. Enduring moments of crisis, University of Maryland Medical Center has shown us, has shown up. One of the most moving examples was when a family in our school community tragically lost everything in a house fire, and University of Maryland stepped in to provide support. On behalf of our students, our families, and our entire school community, I want to say thank you. Thank you to University of Maryland Medical Center for your generosity, your time, your empathy, and your belief in the power of community schools. We are stronger because of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Charmaine Turner.
Can you hear me now? Okay, great. My name is Charmaine Turner, and I am a proud resident of Baltimore City, a committed community advocate and an associate at the Y in Central Maryland, where I support our community health programming. I've had the privilege of working closely with the University of Maryland Medical Center, particularly in West Baltimore. I'm here today to uplift the University of Maryland Medical Center's longstanding and ongoing commitment to community health and wellness through its partnership with the Y. Together, we've made a meaningful and measurable impact in the lives of Baltimore families. Over the past few years, past three years, more than 450 families have benefited from this partnership through our comprehensive community health strategy. This includes access to the Y for life-changing programs such as the Diabetes Prevention Program, which empowers individuals to take charge of their health and manage diabetes through diet, exercise, and improved access to care. In addition, our partnership connects families with vital health screenings, health education, fresh food distribution, and workforce development programs. These efforts go far beyond the services. They restore dignity, build trust, and create healthier opportunities for families. They also foster a sense of belonging and connection, allowing residents to know and to even support each other. I respectfully urge the council to think about the impact of this bill. Let's continue to invest in collaborative, community-centered solutions that recognize and support the full value of organizations like the University of Maryland Medical Center bring to Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go back to Mr. Jermaine Johnson.
Good morning, to the esteemed chairperson and to all the members of this committee. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today. My name is Jermaine Johnson, and I represent the Baltimore Alliance for Careers in Healthcare, also known as BAC. I am proud to offer this testimony today in support of University of Maryland Medical Center's workforce development efforts that are not only intentional but transformational for Baltimore residents. Over the years, the Baltimore Alliance and University of Maryland have worked closely to build real, lasting opportunities for people across our city. Together, we've launched apprenticeship programs in high-demand fields such as medical assisting, surgical technologists. We've hosted a summer U Fellowship Program, supported nursing trainees, and also provided case management and wraparound services. And just this spring, we co-hosted a hiring event that connected BAC participants with direct employment opportunities at UMMC. Additionally, many of our participants have benefited from UMMC's career readiness training, gaining the foundational tools they need to take the next steps in their healthcare careers. Their efforts show what is possible when an anchor institution uses its resources to uplift the community it serves. Their investment in apprenticeship and entry-level workforce pipelines isn't just good business, it's good for Baltimore. We are proud to be their partner and encourage the continued support of programs that connect local talent to healthcare careers. Thank you for your time and continued support of workforce equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Rosenberg.
Good morning, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, Chairwoman, members of the committee. My name is Adam Rosenberg. I am the Executive Director of Center for Hope. Many of you are familiar with Center for Hope, probably from our work with Safe Streets. One of the lesser-known things that we've done for the last almost 40 years in Baltimore City is also manage the city's Child Advocacy Center. We're also the former Baltimore Child Abuse Center. This program coordinates efforts from Baltimore City Police, Child Protective Services, and the State's Attorney's Office in a multidisciplinary approach to reduce trauma when children have been victims of abuse and neglect and create efficiencies. We help over 1,000 children each year who've been victims of this. We fulfill the unfunded state mandate for coordinated approaches to child abuse per Maryland Family Law 5-706. This program is not in the city's budget, folks. It has never been. It is funded by grants and philanthropy for decades, and studies show from the Department of Justice over a decade ago that a million dollars spent in these programs would cost in urban jurisdiction like Baltimore over $4 million to operate without it. If we didn't do this work, the city of Baltimore would be responsible for this there. It is an expensive endeavor and is one of the reasons we found partnership with LifeBridge Health over six years ago, and I'm here in support of those efforts that LifeBridge has to keep our communities healthy and safe. LifeBridge now underwrites the cost of our operations there. They have shared this public health issue that all violence is a public health issue, and there's so much we can do to keep patients and our citizens out of our emergency rooms and in the community home healthy there. LifeBridge underwrites and supports us. We don't have to leverage lines of credit and loans and covers the cost of our financial, our legal, our marketing, our infrastructure, so that almost all of a grant, a gift, philanthropy goes straight to helping citizens there. These are critical services that LifeBridge provides the city in lieu of the city providing this program themselves there. Without LifeBridge funding these critical infrastructures, we would not have survived COVID, nor would we have survived the fact that we lost $1.2 million from the federal government three weeks ago after they abruptly canceled a grant we had to combat violence there. We didn't have to lay off staff. LifeBridge provides us ongoing support systems there, so when the federal government continues to owe us money there, or the state of Maryland owes us money.
Mr. Rosenberg, can you wrap up at this time? Thank you.
Absolutely, Madam Chairwoman. So, I appreciate the time there, and it's just one of the many programs that LifeBridge does to support its communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Samantha Williams.
My name is Samantha Williams. I've been a social worker here in Baltimore for the last seven years. I primarily worked with immigrant newcomer families, asylum seekers, and immigrant survivors of crime. Baltimore's anchor institutions contribute so much to our city through services and by employing thousands of people, but they aren't doing enough to support our city, given their massive revenue. In fact, they own almost a third of city property and only pay 0.04% of their overall operating expenses under the current pilot agreement. The result of this financial imbalance is not just felt fiscally, but personally, by all of us in Baltimore. For example, when a survivor of domestic violence has to wait on hold with 911 for almost 10 minutes while trying to protect their children from danger, when a newcomer refugee is unable to get to their medical appointment at one of our local hospitals because they live too far from public transportation, or when an unaccompanied immigrant child struggles to make friends in their new community over the summer because their local rec center is closed for repairs. It's true that we're all facing a challenging political climate with the tax by the federal government on all of us, but the most vulnerable Baltimoreans are struggling the most to pay increasing rents, exorbitant water utility bills, affording food when a quarter of us are already food insecure, and to access needed services even though we have poor public transportation and deteriorating public infrastructure. It's one times our hardest like this that we must turn towards each other and not away, and we must call on our anchor institutions to support Baltimoreans the way that we support them. That's why this bill to create the pilot task force is so important. We're only asking for anchor institutions to pay their fair share. Because of the city thrives, so do they. I ask that you deny amendments shrinking the size of the task force, creating an imbalance between institutions and labor and community representations. I do agree with the amendment that no professional lobbyist be allowed on the committee. I urge you to pass the bill to create a task force. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Shirley Sutton.
Good morning, City Council. I'm Shirley Sutton, President and CEO of Baltimore Medical System. Baltimore Medical System is the largest federally qualified health center organization in the state of Maryland. We operate eight community health centers, seven school-based centers, and six discount pharmacies, 340B pharmacies. The services that we provide to patients in the East Baltimore and West Baltimore City communities are overwhelming to our organization, and we truly would not be able to sustain what we do each year without the support of Johns Hopkins Hospital and Johns Hopkins Bayview. We have many other partners as well. However, we're aligned with this organization. We're both committed, we share the same mission. Last year, we were able to provide visits to over 240 underinsured residents of Baltimore City. We also dispersed 184,000 prescriptions to the poor. Most of these people would not be able to get these prescriptions otherwise. So, each day, I come into the office and I'm terrified of the notice of another cut from the work that we do. It's devastating, and so I felt I had to come out to say how important it is for us to have the support of a like-minded organization that believe in the mission and taking care of communities in the best way possible. I ask you to consider that when you're making your decision today. Thank you.
Thank you. Carla Paisley.
My name is Carla Paisley, and I serve as the Executive Director of Southeast Community Development Corporation. We are nestled within the community. We're also anchored by one of our most generous funders, Hopkins. We're nestled on one side by Bayview, to the east, and to the west by Hopkins Broadway. It's our organization's mission to promote the community vibrancy for newcoming residents alongside of their legacy neighbors in collaboration with federal, state, city grants, and institutional contributions that make our work possible. So, allow me to create a bit of a timeline for the ideal progression of clientele through our programming. Begin with community schools. We've got five. Those families at risk are identified by our five community school coordinators, who then can make referrals to our case managers for family stability and support. Those case managers can provide such skill-based workshops as eviction prevention, financial literacy to prevent utility shut-off, emergency assistance, and then that person, that family can be referred for housing counseling, for credit repair, for pre-purchase counseling, for HUD-certified housing counseling, post-purchase counseling, homeownership classes, business loans, arts district programming, and community development. Also, we provide construction loans. We rehab and resell homes to legacy residents and newcoming residents for Baltimore City. The best of Baltimore is revealed in this process, when this process works. And this process works when one of the best of Baltimore continues to provide funding that is critical to organizations such as mine. I'm really pleased to be the recipient of this generous funding, not only in the professional capacity as an executive director, but also in a personal capacity. I'm able to serve in my role, because I too have been the recipient of this type of I'm able to serve in my role because I too have been the recipient of this type of funding. I am the child of someone who benefited greatly during-
Ms. Paisley, can you close out at this time?
Sure can. I'm pleased to be able to stand here as not only a professional recipient, but a personal one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Julio Romero?
Good morning, everybody. I'm here, I would like to say something about Johns Hopkins. My name is Caesar Romero. I go by Caesar Romero, and I was the former president for Bayview Community Association and president of the Business Association. And Johns Hopkins being a tremendous partner with us, helping us to bring our community strong, helping us with, every time we have an event, Johns Hopkins always been there. And of course, we have the partnership with the City Council as well. I just would like to tell you that to reconsider this bill because this nonprofit, they do a great job in Baltimore City, and we really need them. And I want to thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Samuel Red?
Good morning. My name is Samuel Red. I am the Executive Director of CURE Operation Pulse, People United to Live in a Safe Environment, for an organization started thirty-plus years ago by a group of clergy in the East Baltimore community. We're a public safety initiative and working in very closely with Johns Hopkins all these years that we've been in existence. Johns Hopkins has provided manpower, funding, and many projects to attend these and help with many projects that we've done throughout these many years, such as National Night Out Safety Days. And in our Safety Days, we provide and execute training for many people in the community, providing and many, helping save lives in and around the East Baltimore community. The East Baltimore community is very needy of public safety, and we need these organizations, such as these nonprofit organizations, to help with what we need to continue to do in and around our community. I ask the organization and the City Council in considering this bill to remember the valuable work this community is being done and provided with by Johns Hopkins.
Thank you. Alana Ginsberg?
Hi. Good morning. My name is Alana Ginsberg. I'm a Bolton Hill resident in District 11. I have a master's degree from Johns Hopkins University, and I support Bill 2536 with no weakening amendments. Baltimore City's fourteen wealthiest tax-exempt hospitals and universities cost the city $47 million annually, but they pay the city only $6 million based on the pilot agreement signed in 2016. That means that these institutions are a drain on our city, requiring taxpayers like me to cover the $41 million gap in city services that they benefit from but do not pay for. Baltimore residents are the backbone of support for Baltimore City, and yet we don't receive the city services that we need. Baltimore residents deserve better. Last month, Baltimore City's already underfunded school system had to cut tutoring and after-school programs as a result of federal funding cuts. I plan to send my daughter to Baltimore City Public Schools in a few years, and I hope with all my heart that her classmates will have safe places to spend their afternoons, extra attention and support to keep up with school as needed, and food to fill their bellies. The school system lacks funds for critical school services. Children growing up in Baltimore deserve better. Baltimore's wealthy institutions need to be made to look at the city where they reside, the city in which they continue to build and expand their tax-exempt real estate holdings. The unmet needs and inequities of our city are immense. Negotiating a pilot agreement which directs large tax-exempt institutions to pay for the city's services on which they rely would be a step in the right direction. I support the amendment to ban professional lobbyists from the committee, from the task force, and I urge you to pass this bill with no weakening amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. B. Harris Truwen?
Good morning, Chair and Council. My name is B. Harris Truwen, and I'm here today representing the Social Work Advocates for Social Change. We strongly support Council Bill 2536 and urge the committee's favorable report. We're a coalition of masters of social work, students and alumni from the University of Maryland. Our over 600 students dedicate more than 350,000 hours of invaluable unpaid work and service across Maryland with a significant focus on Baltimore City. We're on the front lines, supporting children and families in child welfare, in the child welfare system, assisting survivors of trauma and human trafficking, caring for our aging population, and providing assistance to individuals experiencing homelessness, substance use, and mental health crises, as well as those reintegrating after incarceration. We are deeply invested in the well-being of Baltimore. We contribute to the city through our services and our taxes. Yet, the financial burdens on individual Baltimore residents are growing with rising water, sewer, and utility rates, tuition, tuition costs, inflation, diminished or no savings, and increased debt. Meanwhile, anchor institutions, many with millions and billions of dollars in growing endowments and executive salaries exceeding their current pilot contributions, should demonstrate the same commitment. Baltimore residents and families should not disproportionately bear the tax burden and subsidize these institutions. It doesn't make sense at all for Baltimore to balance the budget on the backs of social work students and the people we serve. Baltimore needs a fair and transparent pilot agreement with voices of the stakeholders, especially the community input. We urge the committee to support and champion this critical bill. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Lena Amick?
Lena Amick? Good morning, committee members. My name is Lena Amick. I'm a resident of Waverly, District 14, speaking as an individual and as a member of Woo-Foo and J U F J. I've lived in Baltimore for eight years, and I'm a teacher at Parkville High School right over the city line, and I've chosen to take a day away from my ninth-grade U.S. History class to testify today because I believe so strongly in the potential of a fair pilot agreement to build the kind of city my students deserve. I strongly support a timely, strong bill with balanced composition and a formula for nonprofit institutions to pay their fair share for the city services they use. It's no secret that Johns Hopkins University in particular is facing targeted attack on its finances from the current administration, and that our universities offer great resources to this city. But our city is also targeted, as reflected in our budget shortfall. According to data from the Comptroller's Office, under the current pilot agreement, our fourteen largest nonprofit institutions use $47 million in city services, yet contribute $6 million annually. We have a choice. We can work together to shore up the resources that this city needs so we can all thrive, or we can leave our city's working families to give up their homes, take on extra jobs, and risk their health to shoulder the burden alone. Let's think about that $47 million. If our anchor institutions were to actually pay our city for these services, it would cut our budget shortfall in half without increasing taxes and fees on homeowners and renters. With this funding, we could prevent 15,000 evictions each year. We could make it so our students don't have to spend hours each morning on the bus getting to school. We could do so much. Let's not leave this funding on the table. And I also want to be clear, all of these groups that benefit from university partnerships, their funding does not have to be at stake. This is not an either-or situation for some of these folks. A fair pilot process has precedent in other cities. Cities like Boston, New Haven, and Providence have reached similar agreements with their institutions, and that's contributed significantly to transportation, education, and quality of life, and those anchor institutions continue to thrive, so we can do this too. I hope that we can pass this council bill for a fair, collaborative process to shore up the resources for this city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Susan Malone?
Good morning to all the members of the Budget and Appropriations Committee. My name is Susan Malone. I'm a graduate of Maryland Institute College of Art, and I'm serving as the Executive Director of Wide Angle Youth Media, a media-based nonprofit that empowers young people to tell their stories through media arts and leadership development. I'm here today to speak about the essential partnerships between community organizations like ours and anchor institutions that keep our city strong, especially our local public universities and hospitals. These institutions do far more than educate and heal. They serve as critical collaborators, trusted employers, and foundational supporters of Baltimore's nonprofit sector. At Wide Angle, we've seen firsthand how these partnerships amplify our work. Local universities like MICA and Hopkins have been instrumental to our growth. MICA's socially engaged programs connect us with student artists whose community-based work enriches our programs. Many of those students continue to serve as education, civic media, and nonprofit leaders. Johns Hopkins has placed exceptional student interns with us, boosting our capacity for over a decade, and acted as a vital fiscal sponsor, helping us secure $500,000 in state funding through the DHCD. The funding would have been inaccessible without the university's nonprofit infrastructure. These are not one-sided relationships. Our young people are invited into university classrooms, shaping future civic leaders and their lived experiences and insights. These collaborations are reciprocal, respectful, and rooted in shared commitment to community progress. But this is at risk. A major shift in the nonprofit status of these institutions can have a destabilizing effect, not only on organizations like Wide Angle, but on the broader ecosystem. As the city and state budgets tighten, funding becomes more scarce, and the support we receive from anchor institutions become even more critical. We are in a moment that calls for thoughtful partnership, not division. Let us ensure that our policies strengthen, not weaken, the bonds between institutions and the communities they serve. Our progress depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcelline White?
Good morning, Chair McCray, President Cohen, members of the committee. For the record, my name is Marcelline White. I'm Executive Director of Economic Action Maryland Fund. Economic action advances economic rights, housing justice, and equal opportunity through research, education, direct service, and policy advocacy. I'm also a proud resident of District 7, and here in strong support of House Bill 25036. I want to focus my remarks on providing some more context around the conversation about community benefits that Baltimore City hospitals provide. I am someone with invisible disabilities, and my college-wide son also has invisible disabilities, so we're grateful for the care we receive at Johns Hopkins, Mercy, and University of Maryland. Yet, some facts we can't lose sight of include, first, providing charity care is a legal requirement. All Baltimore City hospitals are nonprofits, which mean they have to provide charity care under the law in order to maintain that status. Secondly, charity care should not be included in community benefits calculations. Each year, Maryland's rate-setting system compensates hospitals for the charity care they spend before they spend it. To include that spending in calculations of community benefits is at best disingenuous and certainly can be seen as double counting. We can't conflate community benefits with city services. These universities and hospitals draw on city services, and the community benefits they provide do not compensate, and we need a fair agreement. Thirdly, Baltimore City hospitals have sued low-income patients in our city for medical debt. Our research report found that between 2009 and 2018, Baltimore City hospitals filed 30,000 lawsuits against city residents to collect on medical debt. The median amount owed was $982, and almost $9,000 of those lawsuits resulted in wage or property garnishment, and we found that those lawsuits took place three times as likely in low-income communities. Navigating new agreement is important for city services and property taxes. Non, large nonprofits should pay their fair share, so Baltimore City has additional funds for teachers, libraries, road repair, and more. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Meyer?
Thank you and good morning. My name is Christopher Meyer. I'm a research analyst at the Maryland Center on Economic Policy and a Baltimore resident in support of Council Bill 36 in a strong form. Local services make our city run. They educate our children, keep our roads and transit systems going, and create affordable housing. Those services are becoming more expensive to deliver between inflation, state cost shifts, and drastic federal cuts. All of us rely on these services. It's essential that we all pay our fair share. Nearly one-fifth of all tax-exempt property in Maryland is located in Baltimore City, compared to only 5% of the state's taxable property. If the largest private universities and hospitals all paid taxes, they would generate more than $100 million a year in annual revenue, according to BBMR. Instead, under the current agreement, they pay only $6 million per year. Meanwhile, they benefit from public services costing nearly eight times that much. This more than $40 million gap between the services the institutions receive and what they pay is equivalent to salaries for about 480 teachers and librarians paving 72 miles of roadway or preventing evictions for 15,000 families. Council Bill 36 would create a fair, transparent process in which a task force of diverse stakeholders would inform the public and recommend a fair formula for determining what these institutions should pay. As introduced, the task force would include equal representation for institutions and workers. Under state law, pilots would ultimately still be determined through negotiations. The task force will be most effective if it retains a transparent process, clear recommendations, and fair representation from all stakeholders. Council Bill 36 is the right choice for Baltimore. I respectfully ask for favorable action. Thank you.
Thank you. Jermaine Johnson? Margie Miller? Margie Miller?
Good morning. My name is Margie Miller. I live in District 7 in Reservoir Hill, and I'm here to ask you to pass a strong bill. I'm an educator, and I received my master's in special education from Hopkins last year. This year, I got a job as an in-school math tutor for city school students, and then I lost the job. Under Trump, the Department of Education clawed back funds, and it promised our state. City schools lost $40 million, causing it to cancel all in-school tutoring programs as well as after-school programs. This was a devastating blow to children and families in the city, and for city schools to have taken this drastic step that other LEAs did not illustrates how underfunded they and the city continue to be. The eds and meds that are here add a lot to Baltimore, but donations to small nonprofits don't pay city bills, and the current setup has eroded our tax base. Property taxes provide half of the city's revenue. The last pilot that the city negotiated charged these institutions only $6 million, not even enough to cover the $47 million in city services that they use every year. Hopkins is the city's largest anchor institution. They will likely argue that now is not the time for them to pay their fair share, but with the cuts, uncertainty, and looming recession, almost everyone in the city is suffering right now, and most of us don't have $13 billion in the bank. In fact, the city has an $85 million budget shortfall. An important part of closing that shortfall is passing a fair, transparent, and timely pilot bill without weakening amendments. That means creating a formula so each institution's payment takes into account their size and economic footprint. Rather than negotiations taking place behind closed doors, they must be open to the public and have community members seated at the table. The current pilot agreement expires next year, so we need to create a timeline and start the process now. Wealthy eds and meds should join homeowners and small businesses in paying for the city's services they use, and Baltimore should join Boston, New Haven, and Providence in negotiating a deal that works for the city. For children, families, and educators, please pass a strong bill with no weakening amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. David Sasse- After Ms. Soseto, we're going to have Nea Redman and Mark A. Thomas. Nea Redman and Mark A. Thomas will be after this testimony.
I apologize. I'm partially deaf with the echo. I start? Good morning. My name is David Soseto. I'm a homeowner for District 14 for almost 30 years. I'm a healthcare worker at the Hospital of Baltimore. I urge a favorable report on 250036. Baltimoreans, including anchor institutions, need to pay the city services we all work on, we rely on. Workers deal with institutions not paying their fair share at work and with underfunded city services and high property taxes. The pilot task force creates a democratic process to determine a fair agreement. When I cut my finger at work, my employer instructed me to get in-service treatment. To my surprise, I received a bill which I didn't pay because I was supposed to be covered by Workman's Comp. Then my employer filed a medical debt lawsuit against me. I got the suit dropped because I knew I had the right to workman's compensation, but not everybody knows the rights. In my case, this is an exception, not because I was threatened with a lawsuit, but because I got it withdrawn. A study on the National Nurses United found it's common for Baltimore hospitals to sue their employees for medical debt. Me getting the lawsuit was because I was informed. That is why it is so important that the task force have equal seats for unions and institutions. Trump wants to gut our unions and take us back to the Gilded Age. Don't do his work for him by cutting labor seats on our task force. He is trying to dim us, but you can make Baltimore brighter with a stronger version of this bill where workers have equal seats at the table in our beautiful city. Thank you for your time, and peace be with you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Nea Redman, and I'm representing community associations that I want you to note are not here today to testify. There's a reason that community associations are not here to testify today, because they don't know about it. I was elected last year to be on the Steering Committee of WUFU. After today, I go probably, so get rid of me, I guess. No problems. I'm also here to represent the East Baltimore Historical Library, and these are the things that I'd like you to consider. First of all, consider that most of the community associations in your district do not know about this hearing. Consider that most of the community associations in your district do not know that WUFU exists. Consider that most of the community associations in your district would send representatives here today to vote for, to have you understand what their interests are, especially considering the medical institutions that we're talking about. I heard people here today talk about equity. I heard people talk about equal sitting, seats at a table. I have no idea why the unions and the hospitals would have so many seats on a task force to represent taxpayers' dollars. Something's not right with that. And as people as intelligent as you all are, I expect you to flag it, realize that something's amiss here. Even though the money is coming from hospitals, why would hospitals have from five to seven seats on a task force? Makes no sense. I'd like to see the NAACP have a seat at the table. I'd like to see associated black charities have a seat at the table. I'd like to see some church have a seat at the table out of historical harms that have happened in my community from these medical institutions. I hope that you understand the importance of not letting unions have those many seats at the table. I heard the young lady today speak about last-minute amendments. Well, let this be a big stop. This is something you really need to question, why community associations are not here today. I've been on this steering committee. We were elected to be steering committees. I've been ignored when I've asked a question.
Ms. Redman, can you please close out? Thank you.
Yeah, I will have to close out, and I will close out by saying this. My mother always said, "If you cannot be a light, be a mirror to reflect the light." These community associations are lights in your neighborhood. I stand here today to reflect them. I'm going to be that mirror. So, wrote your conscience, but seriously think about it. Take care, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Redman.
Good afternoon. I'm here representing the Greater Baltimore Committee, where I serve as CEO, which has more than 300 partner organizations, including every anchor institution within the city and most of our regional institutions. Our anchor institutions are key supporters of economic development initiatives, which include programs like Upsearch, our newly released regional brand, and, most importantly, the deeply under-invested effort to bring more private sector jobs and more private sector businesses to the city. While many great American cities have thriving healthcare and educational institutions, we are among the highest-tier markets with the quality of service, research, and potential opportunity that the institutions offer. Equally, though, we have much to lose with recent federal actions and the long-term damage that current innovation fueled jobs the city needs to compete in a global competitive environment. Baltimore's loss of industrial jobs and the missed opportunity over the last few decades to reinvent our private sector economy is why our anchor institutions constitute such a large share of our city's economy. We can change that. However, they do serve as active partners in the long-term solutions to our economic conditions and the challenges we confront together, from vacant housing, public safety, to local small business procurement. And so, I'm here today to encourage the city council to work in good faith and partnership to determine a pilot that balances the vision we all share for an equitable and dynamic city, while enabling our anchor institutions to contribute, to invest in the critical functions and work, and anchor their communities in the ways that so many major employers and local businesses, vendors, startups, and families depend. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Rigby. Following Ms. Danielle Rigby is going to be Rachel Cutler and Rebecca Schachter.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Cutler, and I'm the Baltimore Director of Jews United for Justice. I live in Arcadia, and I'm a resident of District 3. I have been a JFJ staff member for almost four years, and one of my first events with the organization was a civics class on the Baltimore City Budget. We received a presentation from the city's own Bureau of Budget Management Research. Bob Sennemei shared the challenge so clearly. Baltimore has a revenue problem, which is one factor contributing to high property taxes. One of the culprits, close to 30% of the city's assessable base, is exempted from property taxes due to the large number of nonprofit properties located within the city. We've all heard this stat already today. The good news is that we have a reasonable solution to, in part, address this gap. Let's reassess our city's current pilot agreement with 14 of the city's largest tax-exempt institutions. Their current plan was drafted 10 years ago behind closed doors, with no public engagement. It has led to an agreement which we argue is inequitable in that the institutions utilize $47 million in city services, only contributing a collective $6 million annually. Some of the institutions in the pilot agreement are actively buying properties and expanding their footprints. They're able to profit by sitting on vacant properties, waiting until they have the financing or the market changes, because they can do this because they're tax-exempt. I'll give you one example. In 2014, I participated in an informal count of vacant properties in District 13 in McElroy Park with a group called Housing Our Neighbors. What we found was astonishing. Of the 350 vacancies we counted, Johns Hopkins University was the second-highest owner sitting on vacant properties, 17 of which were concentrated on Castle Street alone right across from Henderson-Hopkins Elementary. The property stood vacant in the community for over 10 years before being renovated. The institution profited, and the community bore the cost. We understand that these institutions do great community work, as evidenced by all of the organizations that presented today. That's why we want to invite them, I will finish to the table, to create a democratic process for determining a fair pilot agreement. Higher pilot agreements do not have to impact funding for these nonprofits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair McCray, President Cohen, and council members. My name is Danielle Rigby, and I am a proud resident of the second council district. I would like to talk to you about my experience with Johns Hopkins and why I strongly believe in the work they do and the value it brings to the people like me and to Baltimore City as a whole. I am a proud graduate of the illustrious Paul Lawrence Dunbar Senior High School in East Baltimore. While there, I had the opportunity to be a part of the Dunbar-Hopkins Health Partnership, with which offered Dunbar students internships, mentoring, and provided us access to professional development resources. The program encouraged us to consider careers in medicine and healthcare more broadly. I personally participated in several workshops and training sessions through the Dunbar-Hopkins Health Partnership, including the Health Professions Recruitment and Exposure Program, or HPREP. For four Saturdays, my classmates and I received hands-on medical skills training, explored career pathways, and completed service learning projects, and connected with mentors, some of which we're still in contact with today. The program culminated in a brunch at Dr. Ben Carson's home with his medical students, an unforgettable moment that made the future feel real and possible. The partnership, this partnership didn't just open doors to healthcare. It introduced me to healthcare administration and taught me office etiquette, resume writing, and professional confidence. It's the reason I built a career within the Johns Hopkins Medical Institutions and why I am now pursuing a doctorate in public administration. The great news is that Hopkins continues this program and similar programs like this to this day. I'm committed to giving back by creating similar pathways for Baltimore's youth. I've greatly benefited from the Hopkins programs, and I believe the work they do. I'm sorry. As a group, Baltimore's nonprofit universities and hospitals provide unique programs, services, and resources to the communities surrounding their campus and to the city as a whole. Nonprofits are a force for good in Baltimore. Both educational and medical nonprofit institutions serve as economic, social, and cultural drivers. They create opportunities for Baltimore students by building better career pathways. They educate people from around the city.
Ms. Rigby can close out at this time.
Oh, I'm sorry. They recruit and employ Baltimore residents for a wide range of jobs and support local small businesses. They continue to provide charity care to communities and work with the community development of nonprofits. Programs like the Dunbar-Hopkins Health Partnership don't just inspire.
Ms. Rigby, thank you for your testimony. Thank you so much.
My name is Rebecca Schachter, and I live in Baltimore City District 7. For the past seven years, I've also worked at Johns Hopkins University as an undergraduate financial aid advisor. So I'm intimately acquainted with the extraordinary financial resources that Hopkins is lucky enough to have, as well as with the incredible transformative impact it can have when we use those resources generously and equitably. Every day, my colleagues and I change students' lives when we're able to offer them the financial aid that makes it possible for them to attend Hopkins. And I'm so proud of the work that we do, and I'm grateful that we have the funding with which to do it. But I also know that we can be more generous and more equitable towards the amazing Baltimore community to which we belong. When prospective students visit Hopkins, my wonderful colleagues in our admissions office never hesitate to tell them what a fantastic city Baltimore is. We boast that our students are active citizens of Baltimore and that our campus is not just in the city, but of the city, that Baltimore is a key part of who we are and what we do as an institution. How much more true could that be if Hopkins contributed a fair share towards the cost of making our beautiful city run? We love to talk about all the wonderful events that happen here, and how much more wonderful would it be if our contribution helped to support stronger public transit to make those events more accessible? When parents express concerns to us about whether their students will be safe in Baltimore, we're always quick to reassure them, and how much stronger would those reassurances be if we helped more to provide for the public safety programs our city needs? At our best, Hopkins and Baltimore can have a productive and mutually beneficial partnership. I support this bill not because I believe it will make that partnership stronger. Of course, as a university employee, I also know that these are difficult times for higher education. Funding cuts from a federal government hostile to free expression, academic inquiry, diversity and inclusion, and so many of the other values that we in Baltimore hold dear pose a real challenge for institutions like Hopkins, and I don't deny that. But I would argue that this makes establishing a fair pilot agreement now more important, not less. When the administration comes for the services and freedoms that Baltimore residents rely on and deserve, our city needs the resources and the funding to fight back and to protect our most vulnerable community members, many of whom are employees or students or patients at the very institutions in question. Moreover, developing a fair pilot agreement through a transparent and democratic process will help to demonstrate that. While the rule of law and the rights of citizens to influence their government may no longer be respected on a federal level, here in Baltimore, they are still strong. For all of these reasons and so many more, I urge the committee to support this bill without any weakening amendments. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Lilly Dinsmoof. After Lilly Dinsmoof, we're going to have Cecilia Gonzalez and Danielle Darby.
Good morning. My name is Lilly Dinsmoor. I am the Baltimore Community Organizer for Jews United for Justice, JUFJ, which organizes more than 1,800 Jews and Allies in Baltimore City to support social, racial, and economic justice campaigns. I submit this testimony on behalf of JUFJ in support of Council Bill Number 25-0036 and urge a favorable report with no weakening amendments. At Jews United for Justice, we are guided in our work by the sacred values of Jewish tradition. I will highlight one: Kol Ha'am, the people's voice. All people have the right to a powerful voice in democracy. We are committed to using our power, social, political, and economic, to amplify those whose voices and actions have been systematically shut out, silenced, or ignored. And we continue to build our own power so that the vision of justice we share with our partners may become reality sooner. The proposed pilot task force includes important voices essential to the fabric of Baltimore: our city leadership, community members, labor leaders, and our institutions. This balance of membership on the task force represents a commitment to collaboration and partnership for the success of the city we all love. A fair and honest pilot means simply that no one underpays and no one overpays for city services. Therefore, the payment in lieu of taxes should not be a random number, but an agreed-upon calculation. We need a process that encourages transparency and trust between institutions and the community. We believe in the integrity of these institutions, who should be proud to contribute an honest amount to our shared resources. Jews United for Justice supports a strong Bill Number 25-0036 without weakening amendments because it is honest, because it is right, and because even though systems feel broken and times feel tight, the proposed Pilot Task Force Plan highlights the best of us and our collective vision for a more just future. I respectfully urge this committee to return a favorable report on Bill Number 25-0036. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Cecilia Gonzalez. I'm a resident in southwest Baltimore. As a homeowner, taxpayer, and active community leader, I can clearly see the disparities created by the lack of a fair share and the so-called community benefits from the large wealthy institutions I live nearby to. Two blocks from my home, there is devastation in the Poppleton neighborhood. Two decades ago, city government signed a weaker agreement with a New York developer to take privately-owned land by eminent domain for private interest, including to house University of Maryland's employees. Two decades later, I've Two decades later, after homeowners and the majority of residents have been displaced, we are left with empty lots and blight. On the corner of Mulberry and Carrollton, a pile of rubble has been left for several years on the land that is now owned by the city. It is next to my neighbor's residence, the Edie family. No matter how many 311 requests or appeals I make to city officials, the rubble is still there, a daily reminder of the disparity between residents and our neighboring institutions: the University of Maryland, the University of Maryland Hospital, the University of Maryland BioPark, and the University of Maryland Works for Developer. Just blocks from their rubble, I pass daily by a new luxurious building at the corner of MLK and Baltimore. It was amazing to see how quickly that high-rise came up. In less than two years, it's now the University of Maryland BioPark Building. One of the 311 requests that I put, it can be tracked to 2021. The institutions portray themselves as anchors in our communities, but their engagement is ineffective. Many of their employees are in fact afraid to come to our communities west of MLK Boulevard. Yet, they have an outsized membership in the board of our local community development organization, which gives them power and ability to check the community engagement boxes of their grant applications to receive funds they later spend for their own initiatives and not necessarily for the benefit and direct benefits of our communities. It is time they pay their fair share for the services they utilize. It is time for funds to directly benefit our communities for the investments that we would like to see. I say yes to creating a task force that renegotiates the pilot agreement that includes community members. Nothing for us without us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Danielle Darby.
Good afternoon, city council members. My name is Danielle Darby, and I am the Director of Outreach. I'm here today on behalf of the Baltimore Dream Center and the Mixed Church to highlight the critical impact of our outreach programs in addressing the food insecurity and supporting vulnerable populations in Baltimore City with Johns Hopkins and other organizations. Our Wednesday outreach program, which provides fresh groceries and produce to low-income, low-access areas, has had a dramatic increase in demand. Starting this partnership, we served over ten thousand families in East and West Baltimore, by 2024 reaching over sixteen thousand families in East Baltimore alone, and have already, in our first part of 2025, have served over ten thousand families. Beyond food access, our commitment extends to community support. Our partnership with Johns Hopkins during this annual Community Day event that we had in 2024 provided over three hundred children with bookbags and school supplies and engaged over five hundred community members with resources such as expungement clinics, housing resources, and much more. This past year alone, during our Thanksgiving giveaway, we provided over nine hundred turkeys and family meals to both East and West Baltimore City and Christmas gifts to over five hundred children. These efforts are significantly strengthened through our vital partnerships with institutions like Johns Hopkins and other major organizations. These collaborations allow us to not only provide food and clothing to Baltimore residents, but also offer crucial support services, including weekly NA meetings every Tuesday, supporting those battling addiction, and grab-and-go bags to those experiencing homelessness, which is over five hundred people. Critically, continued funding and strengthening partnerships will allow us to expand our reach through our, I'm sorry, through our mobile outreach program, enabling us to serve even more vulnerable, low-income, low-access residents in underserved areas throughout Baltimore City. Given the fluctuating income landscape, the continuation and expansion of this work is dependent on sustained funding and support from Johns Hopkins and other institutions like them. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Jerome Ashanafi, Aman Habib, and Donna Johnson will follow.
Good morning, council members. My name is Jerome Ashanafi. I'm with eleven ninety-nine SCU, where I lead hospital and clinic-based research. Eleven ninety-nine SCU represents four hundred thousand healthcare workers across the country, including ten thousand here in Maryland DC. We're here in support of this legislation, calling for the creation of the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Task Force to study and eventually create a fair, standard, and transparent formula by which non-taxable entities can begin to cover their costs for city service utilization. Currently, these institutions contribute six million dollars annually to the city to cover their use of services, things like police service, fire protection, 911, snow removal, et cetera. And the fact that the current pilot exists is an acknowledgement from the institutions that they are using city services and an attempt to compensate for those city services that they're using. According to the Comptroller's Office, these institutions use about forty-seven million dollars a year in city services, which is quite a big gap from the six million that they currently pay a year. And that figure was negotiated in 2016 and has not kept up with inflation since then. It's a gap that needs further analysis and scrutiny. It's important to remember, particularly in Baltimore City, that Baltimore City has by far the highest percent of its land owned by non-taxable entities of any jurisdiction in the state of Maryland, a contributing factor why Baltimore City has by far the highest real property tax rate in the state as well. From an equity perspective, this is worthy of scrutiny. I'll end by saying we've heard quite a bit about all the great work these nonprofits do on a community level. All that work is appreciated and applauded. It's also the primary reason why these are non-taxable entities, according to the IRS. However, that's not the scope of this task force, nor is it even the jurisdiction of city government at large. For hospitals specifically, it's the job of the HSCRC at the state level to oversee how hospital community benefit dollars are spent, and if those dollars are being spent on things that are making communities healthier. Cliff notes, the HSCRC said in 2022 that only thirty-seven percent of community benefit expenditures met that standard. And currently, the HSCRC is taking a more litigious look into how these figures are derived. So as the council and the committee think about this bill, we hope that they will take the time to make sure that the next iteration of the pilot agreement gets the proper scrutiny it deserves for stakeholders and for city residents to make sure that this can be done in a more equitable and transparent fashion. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Aman Habib.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Aman Habib, and I'm a climate policy analyst with Progressive Maryland, a multiracial working-class political organization that leverages grassroots organizing to develop powerful community leaders. And I'm testifying in support of Council Bill Twenty-Five Thirty-Six with no weakening amendments. As a resident of Baltimore City and alumna of the Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health, I recognize the importance of requiring anchor institutions such as Hopkins to financially contribute to the development and growth of the communities they are operating in. I was alarmed to hear that twenty-four percent of Baltimore residents live below the poverty line. Baltimore has the highest number of overdose deaths per capita in the country, and the city is suffering a housing affordability crisis. It is truly paradoxical for the number-one research institution and public health school in the world to neighbor some of the most stark health disparities. Hopkins is only one of fourteen anchor institutions operating in Baltimore, all of which freeload off of city services. This is a disservice to Baltimore residents who pay taxes but see minimal improvements in their immediate living conditions. Baltimore City's Payment in Lieu of Taxes or Pilot Program only requires these anchor institutions to allocate an aggregate six million dollars per year to the city. To put this into perspective, from 2016 to 2022, Johns Hopkins University's pilot contributions were only zero point zero two nine percent of their operating revenue. For the Johns Hopkins Hospital and Bayview Medical Center, the pilot contributions were zero point zero four three percent. These are minuscule fractions of their revenue. Council Bill Twenty-Five Thirty-Six will establish a fair-share pilot task force and an equitable pilot agreement that ensures anchor institutions pay their fair share toward community services that help alleviate poverty, improve community health, and provide affordable housing options for Baltimore residents, among others. Progressive Maryland urges a favorable vote for Council Bill Twenty-Five Thirty-Six with no weakening amendments, as we believe that anchor institutions should actively work toward maintaining and improving the health and well-being of the communities they operate in, not neglect them. Thank you for your consideration and time.
Thank you. Donna Johnson.
Good afternoon. My name is Donna Johnson. I am a longtime resident of the Baltimore and a homeowner in District Nine. My family members own homes all across the city. We pay such high property taxes because so much of the land, cities' lands, is owned by wealthy tax-exempt institutions. I urge this committee to issue a favorable report on Bill Two-Five dash zero zero three six. I pay more than my fair share in property taxes to fund vital services that our city needs to thrive. It's time for tax-exempt anchor institutions to pay their fair share too. My family is feeling the burden of rising high cost of living, while CEOs of nonprofit anchor institutions get multimillion-dollar salaries. I'm a grandmother, so youth safety is my number-one concern. With the budget shortfall, the city may not have enough funding for violence prevention to keep our children safe. I'm also worried about the funding freeze on the fire department. Fires burn more quickly and the smoke is more toxic compared to a few decades ago. As a healthcare worker, I know that quick emergency response times are essential. Not all neighborhoods have fire departments close by. Our fire department needs more resources. Transparency is also important, especially when our democracy is under attack on a federal level. The pilot task force, with equal representation between unions and anchors, and a funding formula will make sure that the next pilot agreement is fair and has public input. The average Baltimorean should have their voice heard in the pilot negotiation. No more backroom deals. Please vote yes on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We have Carolyn Taylor Chester, and that's going to be followed by Suchet Branch, and then Liz Simon Higgs. Carolyn Taylor Chester. Okay. We're going to go to... Okay, I'll see Ms. Carolyn.
Good afternoon. My name is Carolyn. I'm a healthcare worker, and I live in Baltimore City. Since I was a baby and currently reside in District Eight, I have two sons and five grandchildren, one great-grand in Baltimore City. I urge you to issue a favorable report for Bill Two-Five Zero Zero Three Six, because I want my family to benefit from the well-funded city services. Anchored institutions get tax breaks while workers get tax hikes, fines, and fees. We do not have the luxury of endowments we can tap into. If this anchored institutions paid their fair share, the city would have money to hire four hundred and eighty new teachers and librarians. I want my grandchildren and great-grandchildren to have the quality public education before and after school care. For me to go to work and focus on my job, providing high-quality healthcare for our loved ones, for your level, I need to know my loved ones are safe. Universities have private transits that use our roads, which they do not pay for. If they really want to be a part of Baltimore City, they need to contribute to Baltimore City, not to own their own systems that don't benefit none of us, but pass us the bill. The pilot task force needs to equal seats for unions and institutions, so the recommendations are fair. Union workers are voices of the people. We work in these institutions, and we live in the cities and the communities that are underfunded because they do not pay their fair share. Please vote yes for the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor Chester. We're going to be going to Suchet Branch.
Good morning, Chair Womack Ray and members of the committee. My name is Sachet Branch, and I'm a cook at Johns Hopkins University in a shop store for Local Seven, for Unite Here Local Seven. I'm a mother of a three-year-old and a caregiver for two other people in my household, and I'm here to talk about what Hopkins owes our city. I'm a food service worker at Johns Hopkins Homewood Campus. I've worked for Hopkins for several different food companies over thirteen years. Hopkins University took over operation of the food service directly in 2020. Since then, we have had problems with Hopkins' use of temp workers instead of offering good, family-sustaining work to the people of Baltimore. When management wants me to stay at the end of my shift, they tell me at the last minute. And if I can't find childcare for my daughter, then I can't stay. But when I want to stay at the end of my shift, they already have a temp in my place. This job doesn't just support me, it supports an entire household. But Hopkins doesn't think it owes us any respect. Our union has joined with the With Us For Us Coalition to hold Hopkins and other wealthy, tax-exempt hospitals and universities accountable for contributing their fair share. Hopkins has billions of dollars in its endowment, but they don't pay any property taxes to Baltimore. If the fourteenth-largest nonprofit medical and educational institutions in Baltimore paid property taxes, like you and me, it would bring in about a hundred and twenty million a year. That would mean better schools, better roads, better buses, and a future for my family. Instead, these institutions use forty-seven millions of city services each year, but they only pay six million a year. If Hopkins believes in democracy, they should respect their union workers, students, and faculty. They should give back to the community. They don't just owe me, they owe us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Branch. Liz Simon Higgs.
Good morning, good afternoon, Madam Chair and council members. My name is Liz Simon Higgs. I am a resident of South Baltimore District Eleven. I'm also chair of the city's Property Tax Assessment Appeals Board, and I've been on it for twelve years. You might ask, what does this board do? We are the second level of complaint or appeal for Baltimore City property owners who are not satisfied with their property's assessment. So my colleagues and I see a lot of interesting things. One thing we hear, like everybody else, is that city residents, landlords, and business owners all recognize that the city's property tax rate is really high, and folks go to extreme and sometimes dishonest lengths to try to get their taxes reduced. The city's high tax rate also incentivizes developers to seek out tax credits and private deals. I'm sure everyone here is familiar with the term TIF, Tax Increment Financing. And beyond TIFs, the city of Baltimore disperses huge amounts of money in property tax credits. You can go online at propertytaxcredits.baltimorecity.gov and see like twenty-five different credits that the city administers. And there are even more credits in state and city law. A lot of these credits and deals disproportionately benefit wealthy entities and leave the rest of us paying full freight, really more than full freight. And with these deals and credits, the city doesn't just forfeit revenue. It also spends a tremendous amount of money simply calculating, administering, and tracking these tax credits, TIFs, and other deals. The Finance Department has several full-time employees whose sole job it is to administer tax credits. Folks were paying money to lose money, and were paying to maintain an unfair property tax structure. It leaves the rest of us looking and feeling like suckers. Hopkins, Cy, and I Mercy and other large institutions have been expanding their footprints dramatically. And when the US Code and Maryland state law were written, I can't imagine that the legislators thought about the incredible revenue and private sources of money that these institutions would have. So let's please lower the rate and expand the base, and thank you for your work.
Thank you. Jeff Hargrave.
Hello, council members. My name is Jeff Hargrave, and I'm CEO for Mahogany Construction. I'm here today to just talk about my experience with Hopkins and some of the things we've been doing. There's a program called Be Local. When I started my company in nineteen ninety-one, there were no programs to help minority businesses. These programs are teaching minority businesses about financing, bonding, accounting, really how to run an operation, because as you know, most minority businesses are individuals who probably work for someone else, never had the formal training to run a business, but was able to start a business. And with the help of Hopkins and this Be Local program, then I'm an instructor by the way. I teach the marketing class at that program. You know, this is a program that's been around for ten years. Currently, right now, we've got an event scheduled at Henderson-Hopkins School on June the fifth, where we're going to try to bring in all the workforce entities to talk about apprenticeship and how we can train some of these individuals in our city. So when we talk about forty-seven million here or six million there in the gap, that's not really the gap, because these institutions are giving back to our city. And that's very important. You know, when we talk about TIFs and things like that, that's moving the city forward, not backwards. So I ask you to really consider what you're doing here today to find a compromise, because, you know, as someone mentioned earlier, maybe this isn't the right time for this. But again, I know the city needs the revenue, and I'm a city person. I've been born in the city. I grew up in Cherry Hill. So again, I care about this city, but I also know these institutions that we have are doing a lot to give back. So let's look at what they're doing. Let's look at what they're spending to help our city, because the gap is not what we're speaking of today. So with that, I just want to say thank you for your time. But again, we need these institutions, and we need them to help and give back and show up when we need them. And one other thing, one Hopkins programs, all of their construction jobs require minority participation. Now, some people would say that that costs the entities more money when you do minority participation. But what I say is it helps to make our city better and they're all for that at the end. So we need to be in to support them and help them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hargrave. Krista Straffman, followed by Matt Power, then Lorraine Aricat, and then Samantha Gowan.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is Krista Straffman. I am the Financial Secretary of Unite Here Local Seven. After decades residing in District Ten, I recently moved to District Five. I'm reading today the testimony submitted by Tracy Lingo, the President of Local Seven, who is a District Seven resident. Nearly two hundred of our members provide food service and catering for students, faculty and guests at Johns Hopkins University. Like us, almost all of our Hopkins members are city residents and many are Baltimore City's school's parents. Since the beginning of the Trump II administration, our city and our democracy have been under attack. In bargaining to raise standards for Baltimore's hospitality workers, we've been able to focus on wages and affordable health and individual healthcare because our blue state of Maryland has chosen to invest in making sure all children have affordable healthcare through a generous chip program. Now, thoughtless cuts at the federal level and layoffs of federal workers endanger Maryland's ability to continue that program. Throughout the world, organized labor is a pillar of free democracies. Often, our position as the strongest, best organized and most independently funded civil society organizations puts us in a position to lead fights against fascism, fascism. We have taught ourselves how to stand up to bullies who try to make us cower in fear, whether they come in the form of bosses or the kinds of billionaires we now have running the country. Because we know what a fear campaign looks like, our members know that the Trump administration's targeting of immigrants and particularly of immigrant students for using their First Amendment rights to free speech will be used to silence all of us if we don't oppose them now. But far from an excuse for these institutions to step back from their commitment to our city, these attacks are the reason that now more than ever, ever, we need these institutions to dig deep and help the city bolster itself against the deep cuts and attacks coming from the Trump administration. We are proud of the leadership of our mayor. City Council President and Council have shown in standing up and presenting Baltimore as an alternative vision to Trump's bleak vision of scarcity, a vision in which we all do better when we all do better. We believe it's true, even in this crisis, that if everyone contributes their fair share...
Ms. Straffman, can you please close out at this time? Thank you.
This is why we urge you to support City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Three-Six without weakening amendments and the transparent process for pilot renegotiation that it presents. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt Power.
Good afternoon. My name is Matt Power. I'm President of the Maryland Independent College University Association. We're a statewide association representing thirteen nonprofit colleges, including four Baltimore City anchor institutions, Hopkins, Loyola, MICA and Notre Dame. Together, these institutions have touched the lives of more than ten million people through education, employment and community service. Today, they face convergence of existential threats unlike any in their history. Colleges and universities across the country are in crisis and under unprecedented attack from their own federal government. While we are only now beginning to recover from the sharp enrollment declines caused by the pandemic, we are simultaneously entering a generational demographic downturn of American college-age students at the same time that international students are rationally deciding that this might not be the time to study in America. In the first half of 2024, private nonprofit colleges closed at the rate of one a week across the country. And when they closed, they didn't become economic engines generating revenue and property taxes. They became vacant areas of blight and the next city task force and capital improvement projects requiring significant public investment. The federal government has enacted and proposed a sweeping series of cuts that further jeopardize the future of higher education. Key research and student aid programs have already been reduced. These cuts, paired with the ongoing dismantling of the Department of Education's core functions, will make it much harder for students to access a forward college. Given this environment, we're hopeful that the council recognizes the voluntary contributions our institutions have made in good faith and abided by for more than two decades. We're not asking to be exempt from a fair accounting. We are asking for recognition about the true scale of our contributions and the scale of the challenges we face. Our institution is among the city's largest private employers and among its most consistent investors in education, healthcare, public safety, housing and the arts. We don't leave for other states when the city faces challenges. We educate, employ, invest and serve alongside Baltimore City residents. These contributions are not only ongoing, they bend and will continue to be foundational to the city's success. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Lorraine Aricat.
Good afternoon. My name is Lorraine Aricat. I'm the Senior Policy Analyst with eleven ninety-nine SCIU. I'm a resident of District Nine in Mount Clare neighborhood. I support Bill Twenty-Five Thirty-Six as a Baltimore City resident and as a patient, neighbor and alumni of our largest anchor institutions. This bill is about establishing a process to hold our largest tax-exempt institutions accountable to paying their fair share of city services they utilize. This legislation is not about whether institutions are doing enough for the city in their programs and services. We see and value the work they do. This legislation is not about who is hurting more from federal funding cuts. We're all hurting. This legislation is about coming together to solve a gap in funding for city services and to address the unfair burden on Baltimoreans who are footing the bill for institutions. This legislation is a task force that ensures that we're balancing power between labor, community, institutions and the city. These stakeholders are all responsible for coming up with recommendations for the next pilot agreement. This legislation does not yield higher pilot agreements. It simply mandates a fair and transparent process. When institutions tell you that the higher pilot agreement would make them cut services and programs, we want to make sure that you all understand that the current pilot agreement is such a small amount of the institution's income compared to the burden that Baltimore residents have. And to illustrate that, I want you all to imagine that we have one hundred burger cookies that represents an average Baltimore resident's income. These three cookies are how much an average resident pays in property taxes. Now, to illustrate how much an institution contributes with their pilot agreement compared to their total revenue, we're gonna take one of those burger cookies and it's about this much. Hopkins paid just point zero three percent of their revenue. University of Maryland Medical Center paid point zero four percent of their revenue to the pilot. In total, over the past seven years, pilot participants made two point nine billion in operating income while their pilot commitment was one point five seven percent. This marked difference between what institutions allocate towards the pilot and what they would pay as taxable entities leaves a large gap for the city of Baltimore. Passing this legislation is an opportunity to commit to democratic processes and we need to make sure we have a pilot that is with us and for us. Thank you.
Thank you. We were looking for some real burger cookies. Samantha, Samantha Gowan.
Thank you for the committee hearing us today. My name is Samantha Gowan. I'm a District Twelve resident and an attorney at the Public Justice Center where I represent tenants who are facing eviction. And I talk to people all the time who are in rent court because they got behind on rent because of one devastating thing that happened. Lately, that thing has been federal layoffs that put people in rent court, make them face an eviction and then start a cycle of poverty that is very difficult to get out of. The United Way has estimated that twenty-five million dollars would help about eight thousand families avoid eviction. So if we look at the forty-one million dollars that these institutions would pay if they paid for their city services, that's well over ten thousand families that could avoid eviction. Now, in reality, I don't expect the city to take all of the pilot contributions and put it towards just this one thing. But I say this to illustrate the scale of what this money could mean for everyday Baltimoreans who are fighting to survive. Baltimore City in 2024 had about five thousand evictions. So that means that one year of payments of this additional, if they pay their fair share, additional forty-one million dollars, which you just heard is a tiny fraction of one percent of their revenue, could end all evictions in Baltimore City for two years. That is huge. That is a huge impact on people with a very small scale impact on these institutions. Now, you've also heard today from really wonderful programming that is happening in collaboration with these institutions. But what you have not heard is a breakdown of why this task force would threaten that programming. And that's because it would not. The decision that is here with this vote is not the exact number of what they should contribute to the pilot. It is whether we should have a task force to have all of these various voices that you've heard today at the table to talk about this in, you know, with the upcoming 2026 need for the pilot renegotiation. So that is what is being considered here today and I would really encourage you to pass a favorable vote for Twenty-Five Zero Zero Three-Six. Thank you.
Thank you. We are closing out at this time. We have Arlene Okerak, Anthony Waffles, Melvin Wykan following. So Arlene Okerak. Okay, Anthony Waffles.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Anthony Waters and I'm the Director of the John Hopkins Social Innovation Lab. And I want to speak to the impact the program has on Baltimore community. I'll start my personal story. I'm a proud Baltimore native who, in an effort to help my community founder Morwataco, a health company focused on using exercise and community to improve health outcomes for people with hypertension, diabetes and those recovering from stroke. In 2019, I was accepted into the John Hopkins Social Innovation Lab, which is an accelerated program that supports early-stage founders who are building socially and environmentally impactful solutions specifically for Baltimore City. The program provides 5K in funding with opportunities to win up to 20, a curriculum centered on human centered design and connection to the Hopkins ecosystem to help me grow and scale my idea. The same program that connected me to John Hopkins Cary Business School, where anyone who graduated from Baltimore City High School can go for free. After finishing my full-time MBA program in 2022, I came back to the Social Innovation Lab to serve as the Director where we continue to support impactful founders. The alumni of this program like Brittany Young from B360, Bree Holmes from Parity Homes and Jamie Wooton from Collectively have become staples and pillars across the city doing impactful work. These programs help to grow our small business community, create jobs and above all, create real impact where our founders are working on innovative solutions in youth development, housing, parole reentry, workforce development, violence and so on. As the Director of the JHU Social Innovation Lab, I recognize the importance of protecting programs that deeply impact community, especially in the face of financial cuts from the federal government, and I think you all should consider that. However, as a taxpaying resident and a homeowner in District Fourteen Waverly neighborhood, I also recognize the impact of Mezzanine as an industry has on our ability to generate revenue and also believe that our institutions do have a responsibility to help shoulder that burden alongside our community. So I recognize, with that being said, that there's a lot to balance here. A lot of context, a lot of nuance and compromise from both sides. And my only ask is that both sides of these arguments can work diligently and quickly with community in mind and work together to come to an agreement that protects these vital programs and services that Mezzanine has offers, uplifts and centers Baltimore community members and solidifies a sustainable economic model that allows the city to run efficiently and effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Melvin Wykan. Melvin Wilson.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, to the council representatives. My name is Melvin Wilson. I'm the Executive Director of a jobs movement here in Baltimore called Turnaround Tuesday. Since 2014, Turnaround Tuesday has helped twenty-three hundred individuals get livable wage jobs. About sixty-five percent of the people that we work with are what we call returning citizens or ex-offenders. The other thirty-five percent of people that are either unemployed or underemployed. About, right after the unrest in 2015, nine hospitals came together. They came up with a grant that created two hundred and nine new positions as community health workers, peer recovery specialists, GNA and CNA. And these were for individuals that lived within sixteen depressed zip codes in Baltimore City. About ninety percent of those individuals are still in those jobs. I was at a meeting yesterday with the Secretary of Public Safety and Correctional Services. Five thousand people come home to Baltimore City every year from incarceration. These folks have paid their debt to society and they need an opportunity for a job. Our anchored institutions have stepped up greatly. Johns Hopkins and the University of Maryland have been our biggest employers. Forty-five percent of the people that we've helped get jobs are working at the institutions now. Where seventy-two percent are still in their jobs over two years. We're very grateful for those relationships. We believe that the jobs problem in this city is a crime's problem and the crime's problem is a jobs problem. People need an opportunity not only to support themselves, but to support their families. And the anchor institutions have stepped up. I have the pleasure of serving on the Hopkins Local Board where we're able to monitor hiring throughout the city, particularly at Hopkins, and holding them accountable. So we're grateful for this opportunity. We're grateful for the work collectively that we're doing to help people go to work in our city. All of us have a responsibility collectively to put Baltimore back to work. Thank you for your time and I've been here since ten o'clock. I'm ready to go. Thank you.
Me too, Mr. Wilson. Me too. Thank you so much. Jacob Castro. Jacob Castro. Okay, we'll double check a little bit later. Natasha Mayhew. Welcome back.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President Cohen, members of the committee. Natasha Mayhew here on behalf of the Maryland Hospital Association to provide this committee with some information about hospitals as you consider and contemplate this bill. I do want to first thank the sponsor for taking her time to meet with our members to discuss the bill. The Maryland Model. Maryland operates, Maryland hospitals operate under a very unique model different than any other state in the country. It's part of a contract with the Center for Medicare Medicaid Innovation Services and overseen by the Health Services Cost Review Commission. A special waiver granted by the federal government allows Maryland hospitals to operate in this manner as it has for decades. Five key aspects of this I want to point out are global hospital budgets. Hospitals operate under fixed revenue budgets set by, set and monitored by state and federal regulators. Hospitals operate under an all-payer hospital rate, meaning there's equitable access to care. Everyone pays the same whether you have private, commercial, Medicare, Medicaid or self-pay for identical services at the same hospitals. Hospitals also invest fixed dollars to address community needs under population health goals and meet quality of care incentives. Finally, hospitals provide care to the uninsured and underinsured regardless of the ability to pay. Hospitals are facing state budgetary threats and federal threats. Hospitals have the most challenging financial environment in recent history driven by steep increases in labor supply and physician coverage costs alongside growing insurance denials and infrastructure needs. Warming federal cuts and changes to healthcare programs further threaten the financial health of hospitals. As we speak, Congress is marking up a reconciliation bill and taskifying eight hundred billion dollars in cuts considering significant Medicaid cuts to achieve that goal. Dire, not just to hospitals and healthcare systems, but to access to care, coverage, access to service and the health of the communities. You don't have to wait for these, the federal budget to see the impacts of these cuts. The Department of Justice recently eliminated one point two million dollar grant to LifeBridge Health Center for Hope, which provided critical infrastructure support for cross-functional staff incentives for its community violence initiative. If I may quickly conclude, the institutions have been good partners with the city and have voluntarily voluntarily came to agreement with the city in previous years on a nonprofit assessment. As the committee considers this bill, we hope that you take into consideration that of the many agreements with the city with many different entities, any changes to tax policies contemplated by the task force will affect the hospital status, but also potentially those of other entities and should be uniformed neutral based on tax principles, case law and informed by experts. I hope you find this information helpful as you contemplate the future of the bill.
Thank you. Yona Gorlik.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Yona Gorlik. I'm a resident of Reswer Hill. I live in District Seven. And I'm here to urge the council to support a strong Baltimore City Pilot Task Force bill. I care about this bill moving forward without weakening amendments because I care about Baltimore City and because I care about Baltimore City residents. In 2019 and 2020, I served as a hospital chaplain at Johns Hopkins Baby Medical Center. It's important that the anchor institutions Baltimore supports get that support and it's important that those anchor institutions support Baltimore fairly as well. Just this weekend, I had numerous glimpses of what our city's residents stand to gain from a more equitable pilot agreement developed through a transparent process by a representative task force. I attended a community event and I considered taking public transit there. I discovered that the two point five mile distance I would have to traverse would take me as long to cover via public transit as it would to walk. I passed a patched up piece of roadway that had had a leak for months despite multiple calls to 311. despite multiple calls to 311 that created icy conditions throughout the winter. I toured a community farm in my neighborhood that provides free access to fresh and healthy produce to community members who are not able to have their basic needs met in other ways. And I learned that that farm could increase its food production with more robust partnership from the city through restoration to a water valve that has been cut off as an irrigation source. With a fairly composed task force, we can dream and fund a brighter future for Baltimore. It does not make sense to me that individual CEOs are compensated in higher amounts than what their institutions commit to the city in the existing pilot agreement. And I reiterate, when we all contribute our fair share, we all do better. I look forward to Baltimoreans thriving in healthier communities with a more fair pilot agreement established by a more fair and transparent task force process.